Pwnnhau dafau, selechilau. I was about to say civil play, but that's French. Anyway, sit down please. Right, do we have any apologies for absence? Um, minutes of the last meeting. Is anyone prepared to propose these as a true and accurate record of our last meeting? councillor John.
Bonjour. Councillor Rachel Buckler was attending and she's not listed in the minutes, so can that be corrected, please? But happy to endorse them otherwise.
Ah, councillor Chandler.
Yes, I emailed you earlier, Chair, about slightly ambiguous minutes concerning councillor Taylor's amendment. Pardon me. Where it implies that the amendment was passed, but actually what was passed was the decision to debate the amendment. So I think a slightly better wording could be there.
Sorry, so I did discuss this with Nicola before this meeting. Some amendments to reflect the process are going to be made and I hope they will be to your satisfaction. But you'll be able to check them out once they're done. Right, declarations of interest. Public questions. I believe Mr Woodfield, you have a public question for us today. Lovely. Would you like to come down here?
Good afternoon. Prior to my question, I'd just like to point out my observations of the aims and values of Monmasha County Council. I won't go through them all because no doubt you're all very much aware. Now, one of the first points being our purpose, building sustainable and resilient communities. And then with our values, openness and fairness. My question is based on aspects of those aims and values of Monmasha County Council. And my question being, what is it about the levelling up application, second submission entered by the Labour-controlled council on behalf of Sevenside, including any consideration of proposals for Caldegot Leisure Centre that this council is so embarrassed about? Included the total denial of recognising the legal requirements under the Freedom of Information Act and providing the taxpaying constituents with a copy of the application and/or access to its full content, as was the case under the Conservative-led council with the first submission on behalf of the Sevenside and Caldegot area. Now, subsequent to me forwarding that question in the timeline required, I have been given access to a folder whereby the redacted version of the second application I have read through. It is without its appendixes and I had a conversation with Mr Hand earlier on today that following further reduction of content, that will be made available to me as well. But primarily, since the submission date, I believe, was the 12th of July and in section nine of declarations, both Mr Hand and Mr Davis, as signees, submitted that the fact that the URL of monmasha.gov.uk is where the bid would be published. And to my knowledge to this date, it is still not declared.
Thank you, Mr Woodfield. Councillor Griffiths.
Thanks very much, Mr Woodfield, for your question. I think the question you raise is a serious and significant one. It is certainly my intention as the responsible cabinet member that these documents should be made available to the citizens of Monmasha. The fact that they weren't, I regret. I apologise. The process of redacting commercially sensitive information is necessary. It took too long and I'm pleased now that the information is being made available to you. The gestation of these bids, as you know, has taken place over a number of years. The new administration, in essence, received the prepared bids as it took office in May and we worked with those officers to get those bids submitted in time for July. It has taken too long to put them in the public domain. I'm pleased that they are there now.
Thank you, councillor.
No further comment?
No further comment. Right, well, thank you, Mr Woodfield. Okay, item five, my announcements.
Sorry, Chair, before you move on, could I declare any interest in item 7.3, please?
Of course you may. 7.3. Right, sorry about that. My announcements, page 11, I'm going to take them as read. So now we'll move on to council reports. Governance and Audit Committee Annual Report 21/22. Andrew Blackmore, who's the Chair of Governance Audit Scrutiny Committee, I'd like to invite you to present this, please.
Right, thank you, Chair. Okay, I'll take the report as read but would like to highlight a few key points and make some broader observations. To confirm, the report in front of you is the Governance and Audit Committee's annual review for financial year 21/22. The report has already been reviewed and endorsed by the committee at its meeting in July. You are being asked to accept and endorse this report. The report confirms that the committee met its terms of reference over the period and summarises information on the number of committee meetings held, attendance of members and officers at those meetings and a range of papers considered. The report also talks about how the committee has held officers to account and its role in respect of providing assurance to you, the council. It goes on to highlight changes to the committee, including the appointment of additional lay members, such as myself. Despite the very positive messages contained within this report, it is important that we are not complacent and look for opportunities to improve our governance and oversight arrangements. This is really important, given the many challenges being faced by the authority, most notably the pressures on our budget. I firmly believe that the Governance Audit Committee has a very important role to play in providing you, the council, with even higher levels of assurance over how officers are addressing these challenges. My committee colleagues and I have identified several areas where we should be more intrusive and demanding of officers. Clearly, our scope and focus needs to be complementary to those of the various scrutiny committees so as to ensure that we have comprehensive coverage and make best use of the skills we have across the committee network. I firmly believe that the Governance Audit Committee can and should make a far greater contribution and I'm discussing how best this may be achieved through discussions with officers and elected members. I would politely remind you that I, my committee colleagues, are accountable to you and it is for you to determine what you expect from the committee going forward. And to summarise, please consider accepting and endorsing this report and also provide any feedback you see fit on the committee's performance to date and your expectations going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Andrew. As a longstanding member of this committee, I'm more than happy to endorse what you've just said. It's, as far as I'm concerned, absolutely spot on. We have agreed as a committee to look at ourselves again and I'm sure we'll be doing that prior to the January meeting. But yes, it's an important committee. It does hold officers to account. We recently got officers in to explain all sorts of things that we were concerned about and we'll continue to do that. So yes, I'm happy to endorse your summary of the report.
Lovely. Any other contributions? No. Councillor Taylor. Did you have your hand up?
I did, Chair, thank you. I wonder if I could possibly ask the Chair to give us an idea of what areas he feels or what the discussions have reflected around the areas where the committee may make a bigger contribution to the authority's governance function. I wondered in particular if he might say something about those discussions he mentioned that he's having. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Taylor.
Certainly, very happy to. So there are a couple of elements. Maybe the most relevant element within this context is our overview of what I would term people risk. Clearly, we are facing some workforce challenges. You'll be aware, of course, of the redundancy programme and I believe Governance and Audit Committee has a role to play in understanding how risks around our people in terms of recruitment, retention, motivation, engagement, type issues are being managed on a prospective basis. I do note that conversations have had with officers. We've talked about the developing people strategy, which will emerge during the middle of 2023 and I understand that work's in progress. But I take the view that this authority is facing people issues currently and I think it's important that we have line of sight over how those people matters are being dealt with, noting, of course, that the work I'm alluding to is complementary to that of certain scrutiny committees. Was that of any help to you?
Thank you very much.
That seems to be everybody? All right? Thank you, Miss Poynter. There is a vote, yes. Yes, councillor Brocklesby.
And I'll get this right as well. Thank you, Andrew. You can go. I was just about to thank you, Andrew, on behalf of the council. But also to say that I think we're all grateful for the work that the Governance and Audit Committee does on our behalf. It's a central scrutiny committee for the council because if we're not prepared as a council to lay our internal workings open to scrutiny, then we can hardly expect the public to trust us when we have other scrutiny committees and other ways of working. And I'm delighted, as I think all councillors will be, that you as a group are starting to review the kind of things that should be held under scrutiny and I'm very pleased that you're starting with the people because they are our greatest assets and how we work with them, how we support them and how our rules and regulations work to allow us to do the best possible job with those assets is really important and having your oversight, I think, is going to help us strengthen and enhance what we already do. Thank you.
And thank you for your feedback, much appreciated.
Right, we'll actually let you go now. Hey, councillors, we're going to vote on whether to accept and endorse that report. Our voting should be open now. Okay, good, that report is accepted. Moving on, moving on to the replacement local development plan preferred strategy. Councillor Griffiths.
Thanks very much, Chair. This is the second time I've reported on the local development plans of this council. The last was in July. At that time, I was able to report that we were working on a revised scale of development, 6,000 homes over the next 10 years. And I was able to indicate my view that ultimately such a scale of development, as well as meeting our needs, was likely to get the approval of Welsh Government. The report before you today provides you with further detail on the sites and the time scales associated with this report. I'll speak to the three recommendations in turn. You're asked first to agree the delivery agreement, which needs to be submitted to Welsh Government. In essence, that sets out the timetable. If the draft preferred strategy gets your approval today, it will be subject to a public consultation exercise over the next eight weeks. That is planned, that will be intensive. Citizens of Monmasha will be invited to engage with that strategy in a myriad of different ways. We will reflect on that consultation and bring back a draft deposit plan to council, which will then be subject to further consultation, if it has the approval of council, during April and May next year. We reflect on that second round of consultation and bring an amended deposit plan to council a year from now, October next year, before submitting it to Welsh Government, where it will be subject to an independent examination. In my non-councillor role, I occasionally run half marathons. It does occur to me this exercise is the full monty. It goes on for an extended period of time. The end result, I hope, will be a document which will effectively shape the county, shape the opportunities for the county over the next decade and longer. It's an exercise which quite rightly takes time and involves the public of Monmasha. The second recommendation is that you agree the draft preferred strategy as a suitable basis for consultation. This is an important phrasing. I'm not asking you to agree all the content of that draft before you. I'm asking you to agree that it is suitable for the consultation that we have actually planned. It is not the last word. It will change and it will change again as we go through the timetable that I've actually outlined. The new information for council in that preferred strategy is the fact that we've identified three strategic sites. A site to the east of Abigavenny, the site to the east of Caldegot and a smaller site in Chepstow. That wasn't available in July, it's there available now and you will want to take a view on the suitability of those sites and the public of Monmasha will want to take that view as well. Whilst there'll be a focus on those three sites and the diagrams are there and they'll capture the public attention, I think it's important to stress that a majority of the new development will be far more widely distributed throughout the county. They'll be on smaller sites, but they will be in our primary settlements. They will be, as I say, dispersed throughout the county. The case for that scale of development is that there is housing need in the county. We're all aware of that in our wards and I hope you can see the justification for that scale of development as we seek to meet that need. The important point, and I made it in July, is that we are setting an objective of affordability, that 50% of the new development will be affordable homes. But also, within that 50%, 68% of the 50%, 33% in total, will be social housing for rent. Our intention is that we don't just have the right quantity but we have housing at the price that local people can actually afford and enter the housing market in that way. These proposals have already been considered by the Place Scrutiny Committee. I thank the committee and I thank the Chair, councillor Dimmock, for the scrutiny, the excellent scrutiny that was provided. Important issues were raised. I think there was positive interest in the sites which have been identified and the distribution of housing opportunities which were identified. But they were, quite rightly, challenging questions. There was a demand for a lot more assurance on the social infrastructure that would be necessary to support any of the housing developments indicated in the preferred strategy. Learning from that, it seems to me that within the council we will need a transparent analysis of how our schooling provision needs to adapt to the residential proposal. We will need and we will engage with the Health Board, bringing their attention to our proposals and pressing them to respond. The scrutiny committee was challenging on the objective of ensuring that the extensions of existing settlements would be effectively connected to those settlements, that they would not be isolated from what already exists. Having listened to that scrutiny committee, there only last week I was able to convene colleagues around the council to identify with some precision how we would take forward our active travel proposals to support these particular sites. And I would expect that when we come back to the scrutiny committee that we will have the detail that we can share with that committee. It'll be in the spring of next year now. It was only last week that the leader wrote it once again to the Deputy Minister of Transport from Welsh Government on the importance of gaining access from Caldegot, the extended Caldegot, to the M48. So again, picking that point up from scrutiny. The scrutiny committee stressed the importance of the need to respond to housing need beyond the strategic sites. And again, when we bring back a draft deposit plan next year, we will be able to include a lot more detail on the dispersed distribution of housing development throughout the various settlements in the county. Now that we've got these strategic sites in the public domain, we are in a position to engage with potential developers and to engage with local communities in an exercise of more detailed master planning within those sites. And that will, those meetings are now in place and those more detailed exercises, a creative exercise to make sure that we've got the best possible design, the zero-carbon housing, the best connected housing. That exercise can now take place. The third recommendation is that you're asked to agree that we consult on the candidate site register, the habitats tax regulation and the sustainability appraisal. I'll finish with just a few words on sharing with you the confusion that I've found can be caused by the publication of the candidate site register. There will be people in your wards who may not read the whole of the preferred strategy, may not see that the council has actually focused its development proposal on a selected number of sites, but maybe of the opinion that each and every site referred to in the candidate site register is somehow an intended site for development. It clearly isn't. Those are the sites which have been offered for development. They've been appraised. Our preferred strategy proposal identifies those sites which we think are suitable for development. Site register will allow property owners or citizens to say, well, actually, we think there's a better site here rather than there. That's perhaps the purpose of publishing the register at this stage. But I know already in my own wardwork that people believe that if you're on the register somehow or other, that is a site for development. More often than not, it isn't. So in all your wardwork, if you can help by explaining the difference between the site register and the preferred strategy, I think that will be helpful. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chair. I think it'll come as no great surprise that I'm against the proposed housing development in Chepstow, partly in my ward of St King's Mark, but I'm pleased to say that my disapproval comes with very good reason. Firstly, I just thank and appreciate the work of the officers who've done a great job in preparing this replacement plan on behalf of the new administration. But where do we actually start? Well, yes, we all recognise that housing is needed in Monmasha. After all, we are a county that has the space and those who are born here would feel that one day they can purchase a house of their own if they wish to. Excuse me a second. Home ownership is one of the most fundamental conservative values. People are happier, more secure and more rooted in their communities when they own their own home. However, with this recognised need should also come responsibility and we as councillors have the responsibility to also recognise that there's more to this than just building houses. We need to think of those other issues that impact on such an easy fix for house building outlined in this replacement local development plan and the great need for a more common sense approach and solution. In short, the location and infrastructure need to be right. The real issue here is that Chepstow simply can't cope with any more housing developments until something constructive has been achieved with its infrastructure problems. Although the ongoing development at the Fairfield Mayby site looks absolutely fantastic and a wonderful opportunity on a Brownfield site, which in no doubt will reinvigorate Chepstow town centre in time. Those in positions of responsibility haven't even fully appreciated the full impact of the strain on local infrastructure yet. There's over 300 houses there and only one way in and one way out of the actual development. Now, with most homes having two cars, can you just imagine the impact this is having on Chepstow and they're not even fully occupied yet? The strain on Chepstow is immense on its local services, its schools, its GP surgeries and its community hospital with its basic services that should be expanded on. Just looking at two of these, imagine the number of extra vehicles in Chepstow and there's not enough potential capacity at local primary school level to be able to handle further house building. Or are we now telling potential homeowners, don't own a car, don't procreate? But seriously, it's no wonder that residents are frustrated with a gridlocked Chepstow and cannot see matters improving in the near or distant future. We need to regain the confidence of residents with a holistic plan that people can trust. As much as I like you, councillor Griffiths, it's worrying that recently you have admitted that there's a very significant congestion in Chepstow and that the focus there is on development and on these developments further enhancing town centres. But if this is to be, then the focus should equally be on infrastructure and local services. Nothing concrete has been offered up by this administration in relation to further progressing a possible Chepstow bypass. This is after a step in the right direction from Conservative border councils This is after a step in the right direction from Conservative border councils when councillor John was leader and our MPs all met together, the cross-border MPs, met together in March of this year. The stumbling block was always the Welsh Government's seemingly eternal freeze on new road building projects, which is now subjected to a further review again. Or High Beach roundabout improvements after the Welsh Government's failure to take improvements to the next stage. We've debated High Beach roundabout again since May in the motion put forward by my colleague councillor Brown. And there's still no reply, no official reply anyway, from Welsh Government to this new administration. In their own words, traffic congestion is not considered a priority. Now sadly, we're now seven months into this new administration and we're still none the wiser as to what the Labour Group's official position is, although unofficially, we are aware that Chepstow Labour councillors are against the building of a bypass in Chepstow to alleviate traffic congestion and air pollution. Now, I appreciate that any capital investment plan is complicated and far more involved than the average person can appreciate, but this continuous pause in reflective thinking is holding back Monmouthshire and South East Wales. Residents, especially in my neck of the woods, in my ward of St King's Mark, are understandably cynical and will have concerns about delays to building vital infrastructure. In England, a bill is working its way through Parliament at the moment that includes an infrastructure levy which will ensure that communities have the local infrastructure that new development creates the need for. I understand that this levy will be non-negotiable and locally set, meaning that it can be tailored to local communities and local circumstances, ideal for Chepstow's example. It will fund a variety of infrastructure ranging from GP surgeries, affordable housing, schools, roads. And to ensure transparency for local people about how levy proceeds are spent, local planning authorities will be required to prepare infrastructure delivery strategies. We need to be proactive in looking for ways to increase the delivery of new homes and infrastructure. And this seems to be a good common sense approach, but there's no such equivalent in Wales. And as you mentioned earlier about the Place Scrutiny Committee, and can I just commend the Chepstow Development Forum and Bayfield Residence Association and its chairman, who have highlighted many important issues and matters of concern in relation to future development, not only in its original submission to the local government development plan, but also in its initial response to the replacement plan, which was given during the public forum at Place Scrutiny Committee only a few weeks ago. Certainly well worth listening to and I hope that this administration listens and responds accordingly. I won't go over the full content of it, but just a slightly recap in five points. They rightly argue that, one, the preferred strategy promotes a level of growth that conflicts with guidance issued by Welsh Government under its Future Wales Programme. Two, the strategy applies a countywide analysis to Chepstow, but the unique characteristics of Chepstow are not represented by the proportional growth approach. Three, Chepstow has already contributed a significant number of new homes to the county in this revised plan period. Through the large development site at the former shipyards that I mentioned earlier, the impact of these new homes has yet to be felt, but can only increase congestion, pollution and demand on already overstretched services while reducing health, wellbeing and natural immunity. Is it unreasonable to expect a town that is so blighted by numerous physical factors to yield prime agricultural land such as bayfields and protected landscape to compound its existing environmental problems? National strategy reinforces the need to maintain the rural characteristics of Monmouthshire. Four, the strategy ignores the impact of every significant housing developments in the adjacent Forest of Dean council area. This must be quantified and accessed holistically, assessed rather, holistically, when proposing further growth in the Chepstow area due to the significant overlap in demand for services and amenity in Chepstow. The strategy will fail to have a basis in reality if it does not respond to and coordinate with the plans of an adjacent authority, irrespective of whether the authority happens to be in England or Wales. Chepstow now suffers at the confluence of two authorities that may fail to cooperate due to political persuasions. And finally, five, there's been no formal consultation on the selection of the preferred site for Chepstow, with the public feedback from the informal consultation ignored in practical terms. So just to close, if you want to make a case for more housing in Chepstow, first get the infrastructure in place and the right location, or at least make some progress in great leaps forward in infrastructure planning so that you can then make a case to residents and certainly before moving ahead with this badly thought-out local development plan that harms Chepstow. I completely endorse that local voices should be at the heart of our planning system and I hope that if this replacement LDP gets approved today, Chepstow and Monmouthshire residents will use their structured and sensible voices in the public consultation that will follow and that the decision makers will fully take on board their concerns. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Edwards. Councillor Butler.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I would like to thank councillor Griffiths for bringing his, introducing the topic to us, but I particularly like to thank everybody in planning, because I know the huge amounts of work they've done over many years to bring this revised local development plan to us. And I do recognise that it's a compromise plan because the earlier plan was based on locally evidenced based objectives and it met with the Welsh Government response. So hence we find ourselves in a situation where we have a revised plan. One of the main issues we have, which has been mentioned already, is we lack an identified strategic solution to the phosphate treatment. And this has meant that we're sort of at the moment limited to the sustainable settlements of Abigavenny, Chepstow, Caldicott Seven Side. And I know there are others who want to speak on those topics and I thank my colleague councillor Edwards for the very eloquent expression of the issues facing his ward. I think the 50% affordable housing is a great aspiration, but it really will require developers to buy into a vision that might not be achievable. I also feel frankly a little bit rejected by Welsh Government because Monmouthshire is not in the, not a national growth area. We seem to be out on a limb. We don't even, we seem to be in the Welsh Government Future Wales 2040 plans, the national What's not been mentioned so far is that this plan is not just about housing, it's about a framework to enable provision of employment land too, and it will bring estimated 6,240 additional jobs to Monmouthshire. So I do want to see it succeed. My own community of Goitra Vauw is in the secondary settlement area. We have five candidate sites around us, but sadly, for the young people in my area, we are affected by the ask phosphate catchment. So I'm really not sure at all whether we will see any housing built for the young people in my area. Finally, I just want to conclude really by reminding everyone that the exact distribution of housings will follow the assessment of the candidate sites, which will then inform the deposit plan. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Butler. Councillor Dimmock.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you officers and councillor Griffiths for this report. Like Chris, unfortunately, I cannot support it as the county councillor for Port Skewett Ward, which is one of the preferred sites, a village that would see a number of properties increased by over 60%. In recent years, we have had a number of developments already and with the quick road development that's currently underway, which is totaled in the region of 500 new homes already throughout the villages of Port Skewett and Sedbrook. To add a further, 925 would be a disproportionate amount of housing for a village and Port Skewett does not want to lose its identity as a village or the green fields this report is proposing to build on. This is not evenly dispersed in the settlements throughout the county. The report advises its focusing on growth around sustainable towns. Caldicott is a declining town centre and needs vital investment before we can encourage more people to the area. We have to learn from Chepstow and the bottleneck it has become. Just with traffic lights that have recently been added to the B4245, these last few weeks, we are seeing huge tailbacks and delays and the current road infrastructure is not adequate and people inevitably be left to commute to Bristol and Cardiff or other locations due to poor road, public transport. Another huge concern of mine is flooding. Houses and businesses have been affected by flooding costing them thousands. The Mount Balance, the Mount Balance site right now is right on the edge of the zone C2. Surely developing this area would increase the risk of further flooding to this site and the surrounding houses. I request that the council do not support this paper today and that officers reconsider their proposals and look at addressing the local infrastructure, whether that be road, public transport, education or health, and come up with a more fair allocation across the county to address the housing needs. Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Griffiths.
Thank you councillor Dimmock. Just quickly, councillor Watts, I see you have your hand up. Based on when I saw it, I'm going to come to you between councillors Bryn and Pavia. Councillor Brown.
Yes, thank you, Chair. My ward is in Sharn Newton Ward and it includes Palmerick and Matherne. Palmerick and Matherne are situated between Chepstow and Caldicott. And I think what needs to be remembered in relation to this particular plan is that there's only 5.8 miles between Caldicott and Chepstow. This compares to 19 miles between Caldicott and Monmouth and 32 miles between Caldicott and Abigavenny. So the concentration, if you look at table two, the concentration of development with Bayfield and also Caldicott East means that the majority of the housing is going to be in this particular area. Now, Caldicott doesn't operate on its own because basically, people from Caldicott often want to commute to Bristol. So it means coming through Palmerick on the A48 to get to Chepstow and get to the congestion that's at High Beach Roundabout. And also, we've got to consider the other plans from the Forest of Dean. The Forest of Dean want to build 7,440 houses in their next plan and they're planning for Liddney to increase from 11,000 to about 15,000 or 16,000 in terms of, and a lot of people from Liddney Gloucestershire travel through the other end of Chepstow, basically to join again the High Beach Roundabout. And I know people who've, who actually live in the Liddney area who say that it takes them two hours to get to Bristol. Also, the Forest of Dean are planning 600 houses, beachly, Sedbury, Gloucestershire, Chepstow. And obviously, again, that'll impact the area of Chepstow. We haven't got the road infrastructure for it. The High Beach Roundabout is on World Tag one stage, it's got World Tag five stages to go through. We haven't got the bypass and we haven't got any extra roads either. So it's just going to result in Chepstow being at an absolute standstill. Now, I do support the fact that there is a need for more affordable housing, but we've got to get the infrastructure in place first of all and we've got to get the guarantees that the funding from both Welsh Government and from the English Government is going to be forthcoming for the bypass and also from the Welsh Government for improvements to High Beach Roundabout and also basically any other road infrastructure that's needed. We haven't got that at the moment. There's no use in building more houses if people can't actually get anywhere. And I think this is the problem that we've got. And it's all very well saying that people from Caldicott will actually travel towards Seven Tunnel Junction and get the train in. That won't necessarily be the case because of the fact that it's often more convenient to get into your, into your car. You look at table two and you see the percentage of development in this Chepstow concentrated in the whole of Chepstow-Caldicott area. And we just haven't got the infrastructure for it. And I understand that councillors from Caldicott are concerned about other infrastructure issues such as health. If you look at table two, it actually says for Caldicott East, mixed use, it doesn't include like Abigavenny, education and community use, and there's no mention about any health facilities within those boxes. When I originally looked at the Caldicott East site, it just said residential. So these extra mixed uses have been added afterwards and not necessarily whoever put in those particular site requests. So I think there's a question mark about what sort of mixed use there will be in any event. So I think really the concern, I appreciate the problems with regard to phosphates as to why there isn't development in other areas of the county, but this won't spread the need for affordable housing in every, every location in Monmouthshire, not just concentrated in this six mile area, which really doesn't provide for a preferred strategy that is actually having development across the county. And I also see that Monmouth has got zero development in the RLDP. Now, I appreciate this phosphate issue, but you have to consider that this plan goes on to 2033. So are we saying in 11 years' time that there won't be any, any result in terms of alleviating this particular issue? Because if so, it's a very unambitious plan. Now, I'm sure the answer that will come back will be, oh, we've already got some sites from the previous LDP that we can develop. But I don't think that's really providing a cross range of development across, across the county. And obviously, in the Chepstow area, we are concerned also, not only about the traffic jams, but about the air quality with Hardwick Hill being in a clean air zone. So, I mean, I just think that the Place Committee, interestingly, Monmouthshire County Council said that they wouldn't support the Forest of Dean plan unless the infrastructure was in place, the bypass and also the active travel measures. Now, what we're being asked to do today is to support a preferred strategy that doesn't actually cover those issues. And it's no use telling us we'll have those as a plan later on, as I've heard many times. We have to get that in place first of all, because the residents in our area have really, frankly, had it had enough because it affects their quality of life. It means every time they go anywhere, it takes twice as long. It shouldn't take, if the traffic is clear where I am, it would take me half an hour to get to Bristol. Because of the High Beach Roundabout, if I go at peak times, it would take me an hour. It takes me half an hour on occasions to get from Palmerick to Chepstow, which is only two miles. Now, that is absolutely ridiculous. I can get to Newport quicker, you know. And I think this plan does not fully consider the practicalities of people who already have an infrastructure that's at breaking point. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brown. Councillor Birch.
I would like to thank the officers and my colleague councillor Griffiths for the protection of this plan, which makes a huge step forward in meeting the county's need for affordable housing. We are in an absolute housing crisis. We have young people who are leaving the county and I'm delighted that this sets the basis for a growth in affordable and social rented housing in sustainable settlements. We are committed to ensuring that those are sustainable settlements and that the active travel links and those 15-minute neighbourhoods, as well as making sure that those homes are exemplary in terms of their carbon footprint, that that is the core of the plan, that is the core of what we want to take forward. I absolutely take the points that everybody has raised with regards to infrastructure and I understand that what... And I understand that what part of the next stages is to work on transport planning to go alongside this strategic plan. I hope that councillors could support it today. I believe it is a major step forward for us in the county to see the future, the strategic sites set out.
Thank you councillor Birch. Councillor Bryn.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to say that I too found it tricky to understand the vision of the LDP without sight of the infrastructure and transport plans. We want to build future-proof and sustainable communities, not further exacerbate health inequalities and increase traffic on our roads. Ensuring access to services and public transport and facilitating active travel as part of the planning and design layout of each new development is paramount. Health assessments need to be mandatory requirements for planning large developments. Affordable housing really needs to go hand in hand with affordable transport options. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bryn. Councillor Watts.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I mean, I'm sorry to repeat to council that there is a housing crisis. I mean, it's kind of apparent, the average, and I know you've heard this from me before and my colleagues as well, but it's quite right we move forward and make progress because the average working age in Monmouthshire is 46. It could be more. We're then facing a demographic time bomb. Even the late great Bob Greland admitted that if we do nothing, we will then become an insolvent local authority. We won't have enough young people to sustain our services going forward. So I appreciate there might be some politics. We've heard a little bit from Christopher. You know, there's some scripted answers here about why we shouldn't, why you don't want to sign up. But we have to have a debate and that debates by vote, that, that debate begins when we vote for this and we start that debate and we ask the public what they think, what they, what they believe the best options. Me personally, I think, you know, we can resolve some of this if we detrug the M48 and allow traffic onto that. That solves many of our problems. But I gotta, I've gotta, I've gotta remind everybody, this LDP came forward because the other one wasn't fit for purpose. We had to redo it and that was a failing of the last authority. So I won't take any lessons from the previous Conservative Authority who just idled their way through the last administration until it was too late before the officers reminded them effectively it wasn't delivering. So I'm happy to support it Chair. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Watts. Councillor, enough chundering. Councillor Pavia.
Yeah, thank you Chair. As a Chelmsford member, obviously I find myself in a difficult position to support this preferred strategy today. You know, I don't think anyone could be critical of the underpinning principles of the strategic document. There does, as an authority, we do require more good affordable homes in the county and certainly good quality homes built to as best a carbon neutral standard. Although I think there are some question marks still around the deliverability of the administration's aspiration goal of the 50 50 split in relation to market and affordable. However, while I appreciate the current constraints that exist in the North of County around phosphates and the national planning policy constraints relating to development at the centre of the county, I think to identify a preferred site for the development in Chelmsford on the scale identified, I think is completely unrealistic. And, you know, not just in my view, but more importantly, in the, in the view of local residents that I represent, I'm not going to rehash the, the issues that, of concern raised very eloquently, I thought, by councillor Edwards and forensically unpicked by councillor Brown. However, I will say that the, the many, many emails I've, I've received since the proposed preferred strategy was published, the same themes emerge time and time again. These shouldn't be construed as nimbyism, these concerns raised by residents. That's not the case. But rather they should be viewed as residents wanting some firm guarantees about the infrastructure challenges that already exist in and around the town of Chelmsford. And that's not necessarily just around the traffic challenges. We have the, the challenges around High Beach on the 466 Link Road and on the A48 itself, but also around the public infrastructure challenges that exist in relation to our primary and community care, as well as our schools. Residents just want the current challenges to be alleviated or at least to have some firm guarantees, some firm commitments that plans are going to be put in place to deal with these challenges before further development takes place. And that, in my view, is absolutely justifiable. We have no firm commitments from the administration when it comes to progressing the business case for the Chelmsford bypass, something that this council has committed itself to. We have no firm commitment about the upgrades at High Beach. And I've seen no firm commitments from the health board or the local GP consortium around developing primary care capacity. I don't believe we can simply move forward on a wing and a prayer and hope that these issues are going to be resolved at some point in the future. And I'm absolutely sure this is what we will hear from the public in Chelmsford if this passes and goes out to consultation today. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Pavia. Councillor Keir.
Thank you very much Chair. Can I also echo the many comments here today in thanking the officers and councillor Griffiths in this report? I'm starting to recognise after seven months how much work that the officers do in such a detailed work that takes a lot of reading for us. Can I also thank councillor Griffiths for just highlighting, when you talk about the site register versus the strategy, and it's certainly something that I will take back into my local constituency. But with regards to the site register in Asc, you mentioned that these had been already been assessed. There's two new sites here in Asc which sit on floodplains and that were badly flooded in February 2020. So I'm struggling to understand why they've been included. And also that there are, the remaining three sites are ones that have received significant local rejections in the previous LDP. So we have the issue with flooding in Asc, which you're aware of, the infrastructure. The school in Asc is, is full. We are aware of the sewage problem in Asc and the CSO and the connection to that. I'm not sure when that is going to be alleviated. And of course, we recently had an active travel plan funding rejected. So I do praise the 50% plan for social housing. With my other hat, outside this council, my job is to fund residential property developments. That's what I do. So I'm in touch with a lot of developers and there are criteria for lenders with regards to profitability and things like that. Lenders are going to struggle with a 50% requirement. I think that's something that needs to be understood if it's not already into your thought process at the moment. And I do wonder whether or not any consultation or discussions or whatever have taken place with funders in making, trying to make that an achievable policy. It is laudable. We, we understand the reasons, reasons why. I do have concerns for it being achievable. But I would thank you for this forward looking plan. I'm not interested in what's happened in the past 10 years, et cetera. It's about looking forward and how we as an administration, as a group, can get this plan into fruition. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Keir. Councillor Fuchs.
Thank you Chair. I'd also like to thank councillor Griffiths and the hard work that's gone into preparing this plan. I think I would urge all councillors to support this plan coming forward. And as councillor Watts has eloquently said, this is the start of the process. There follows after this initial plan, debate, discussion and further development to this plan. But I think it is worth looking back actually councillor Keir, in your previous plan, there was a scale of development supported by the Tory administration, twice that, that was proposed here. For example, three sites in Chelmsford, not just one. Three sites in Coldicott, not just one. So I think we need to realise that we, we are being realistic in our proposals here and we are not proposing nearly as much as what has been proposed by yourselves before.
Thank you councillor Fuchs. Councillor Callard.
Thank you Chair. And thank you again to councillor Griffiths and the officers for the report. I think it's, it's important that we remind ourselves that at this stage, you know, we'd like to go on to public consultation. You know, let's get the feedback from the residents of Monmouthshire to this plan. You know, it's a good plan and I support it. And I'm, I'm a little unclear on the position of the opposition to this. We've got the, the Chair of the scrutiny committee who scrutinised this, didn't raise any of these issues during the scrutiny committee and suddenly in full council is against this plan. And we've got-
Sorry councillor Callard, you are wrong. I certainly did it again.
Councillor Dimmock, like come on now, you know better than that. If you want to make a personal explanation or have you put your hand up and I hear it, but don't do that. Do you want to make a personal explanation?
I would like to because that is incorrect.
Good.
Thank you Chair. So yeah, I am unclear on the objections to buy the Conservative group on this, especially considering as, as my colleague councillor Fuchs said, you know, what's changed, what, what's changed for them in the last year that made them propose three times this level of development? And then suddenly this is not acceptable. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Callard. Councillor Bond.
Thank you Chair. I'd also like to thank councillor Griffiths and all the officers because this has obviously been very hard work to come up with this and I fully endorse it. I think, I understand, I don't know, everybody's appreciating that this is proposed sites. So all this will come forward again when it, when they're actually for review, when they become live and become actually an issue or something or the start of the process. So I don't think if we throw, we throw this out now, we've got nothing. We need to move forward. We need to move forward because for a start, the issues that have been mentioned already are already existing. They've been existing for years since Tesco was put in there, it's been awful at the roundabout. We need to, we need to look at the A48, sorry, M48 and between Caldicott and Woggett. And, and that will make a change for Chelmsford because all the traffic won't be going that direction and perhaps go on the other bridge possibly. But all these things have already been existing. They haven't just come since May. Also, and as has been said before by other members, the last plan had more housing proposed, areas proposed. So how can you, how can people now be arguing against fewer houses proposed? And we need these houses for the homeless as we all know that we've got a problem, a severe problem. We've got, we want younger people to stay in Monmouthshire and come to Monmouthshire. We want to reduce the, the, the average age because we need more funding going into Monmouthshire so that we can afford the, the nice lives that we have currently. And, and I totally agree with councillor Bryn that we need a transport plan and infrastructure we can, and sustainable, as sustainable as possible. And I know it's being worked on. I know it is, but we haven't got it yet. But these things run in parallel. You can't say we can't have houses or we won't have this plan because we're going to wait for the infrastructure first. It runs in parallel. You can't just, otherwise we'd be waiting forever for another thing to happen and nothing will get done. So I think we should be supporting this and we should challenge things as they come up and challenge the things we've already got. And they've been existing for years and years from the previous people, the previous members on this council had these problems then and they weren't solved. So they're difficult to solve. But if we work together and accept this plan for the houses and then look at the infrastructure and, and the sustainable transport, then we have a chance to solve all the problems we all see. Thank you. I support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Bond. Councillor Mayby.
Thank you Chair. I similarly to my councillor colleagues dismayed the reaction, given that the level of growth being proposed here is so much lower than the preferred strategy that was consulted on in July 2021 under the last administration. And I'm really confounded about what has changed this view so significantly. But as I'm often reminded by my colleagues, I think I am still very naive about the nature of political debate. And I have to say quite upset by it because I think that we are all wanting the same thing, which is better housing and a better demographic balance. The reality of rejecting this approach that we put forward is that we will have no new housing virtually for quite a considerable length of time. I cannot believe this is really what you want. We are, we are proposing 2,200 more affordable homes in this plan and those will be lost if we don't go ahead with this. And the demographic imbalance that that will cause is really a serious thing to consider for all of our communities. As councillor Watts has pointed out, we will see the lack of key workers in significant areas that matter to the wellbeing of all of us rejected and impossible. They cannot afford to live in the areas that we're talking about. I'm really shocked actually at the reactions and, and very upset by it. As you know very well, I think you know, we're pushing as hard as we can for the infrastructure improvements that need to run in parallel. It's a bit of baby steps, isn't it? One goes forward, the other goes forward and above all the difficulty in raising the funds for these different things. But the reality is that we will be chasing and pushing for the improvements in public transport at the same time and indeed are doing. The number of conversations that we've had with Welsh Government to try and push for-
Councillor Mayby, you've gone mute.
I'm sorry. Did you hear, was I on mute for all of that?
No, no, no. The last like 10, 10 seconds, 10 seconds.
I think I was automa-
And again.
I've been automatically muted for some reason. I'll shut up. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mayby. Councillor Peter Strong.
I withdraw. My points have been made by previous speakers. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Chandler.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things. I think, you know, we've gone through a lot of scrutiny and discussions on the plan. And I think the overall objectives, you know, we have broadly agreed and endorsed. And I think I can understand why maybe individual members in certain areas feel the need to make a public objection about the development in their own personal area, their own wards in order for their own political reasons, but with the expectation perhaps that the plan is still endorsed. Because we don't want to have this type of nimbyism, I don't think. It's, we need to take a strategic view on behalf of the whole council. And I think we've already endorsed the, the broad direction in terms of the, the growth strategy and the spatial strategy. So I think that's there. I think my concern is, is going back to infrastructure plans and, and local transport plans and all the associated things. I fully understand that at this stage in terms of this preferred strategy, those may not be in place, but they do need to be in place by the time of the deposit plan. Now, if we look at the delivery agreement, the proposed delivery agreement, we're going from a period where consultation on the preferred strategy ends on January 23 and we, and then there's a complete void until we get the deposit plan in March 24. And I think, and it is in that period where all these other strategies, infrastructure plans, local transport plans and all the other ones that go with this are supposed to emerge, but there is no timetable for their emergence. And I think, given that these are issues that have come up at every workshop that's been done on the, on the plan, every scrutiny committee, I think we need to have more confidence in what is the process and the timetable for these infrastructure plans and transport plans to be put forward. As I said, I'm broadly in favour of the, of the, of the preferred strategy, but I think the failure to actually address some of these things that we've been talking about in everything here, just to set out a timetable saying, what is this? Because we get lots of assurances. I mean councillor Mayby, you've talked about, yes, we've assurances that there is a transport plan in development, but we've not seen anything of it. We've not seen any indication of what form that's taking, what process that's going through, what timetable that is, you know? And then just we look at the broader infrastructure plans, the same thing, there's a lot of assurances but no detail on actually how they're being developed and when we might see some drafts and when they're going to go to scrutiny, when they're going to come to council. I think that's my biggest concern is not the spatial strategy, the growth strategy. We've already endorsed that. It's that detail and the confidence that we've got in how these other areas have been brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chandler. Councillor Howarth.
Yes Chair and good afternoon to you Chair. And thank you councillor Griffiths for your, for your deposit today, your draft deposit. I do welcome it. I do have serious reservations about the 50%. I had serious reservations about the 50% on affordable homes in the last plan and it came to fruition that my reservations were, were quite correct. And I do blame the authority for that on, on the, the key sites. And I will go back. Yes, we should go forward, but I will go back because never met the same mistake twice. Affordable homes, social housing, whatever you want to call it. Affordable homes, social housing, whatever you want to call it nowadays, I spent many, many months working on this in the previous administrations that I've been part of. And we have to be really careful here on the basis of is the developers, I think it was a previous councillor did speak about developers. They are ruthless, they're a business and they are shareholders to, they have to report to shareholders. So on our key sites, and I will come back to this, I will support it today, I am going to support it today, rest assured, because we need to move forward. But let me rest assured to councillors and to the cabinet here that if it's not put right, I won't support it in the end. 50% affordable homes is not going to be deliverable to our key stakeholders in delivering this plan. And they're not us, that is the developers. They will not go forward on, I think it was Tony Keir on funding for developing sites, they will not take that forward. That is a real, real negative for us, we have to be really careful with this. We made serious mistakes, Madam Chairman, with the previous plan. Our planning committee allowed develops to go forward, not meeting the criteria that we sat speaking about for many, many months on delivering affordable homes on percentages. The toolkit we used to do that was, was non-deliverable and they did not deliver the affordable homes on them key sites. That's why we've fallen back, not because of matters of incompetence or we as councillors not doing things right, we've fallen back because the capital receipt that we were receiving on some of these key sites as a council were possible. And you have to think about that as well, because at the end of the day, to deliver infrastructure plans, the money has to come from somewhere and it will not be coming from the Welsh Government, we do know that, even though it's under review, it has to come from the funders who fund these sites, these large sites, it'll have to come from them. And for us to have that, there's going to be some sacrifices to be made. So the 50%, if we stick by that rule, I'd go for 100%, but that's virtually impossible. I still believe the 50% is going to be impossible on these key sites. And I would urge members to make sure that when we take this forward, that we come out with some, some more realistic figures, probably 40%, 30%, because they will definitely chip us down on that. Mark my word, they will want to deliver nothing on that on the basis of is how can they deliver on a 50% side where they have to make profit, because that's what it's about. So members, I will support it today to take it to its next stage, but after that then, I will be close scrutiny with other members on making sure that if it's not right, it will not get supported. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Howarth. Councillor Eason.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues, and thank you officers and councillor for presenting this report. I was one of the previous administration where we tried to get a plan through and the words then from the now opposition was go and talk to your paymasters in Cardiff and get this sorted. Well, we have control, what you might call paymasters, I don't, and we've got a way forward to move this onwards. You may, you may not, may or not remember the Burns Report, which talked about the, and I'm spreading the argument that people are bringing forward about infrastructure, which is an important issue that we've got to deal with, we've got to put this in, we've got to put this at the top of our plan, I agree. The lack of, the lack of roundabout, the Chepstow bypass, the M48, Seven Tunnel Junction, Chepstow Station, Liddley, they've all come into the, into the mix when we met Lord Burns and in his report. To move this forward, we need to support this plan, yes, we've got to go for the aspiration of 50% of affordable housing, as councillor Howarth says, 100% would be ideal, because there are nearly 800 families in this seven side area who haven't got a home to go to, it'll soon be 1,000. So we've got to give them the opportunity of having a home to go to and also we've got to give the public the opportunity of discussing this in consultation when it is 2024. But in the meantime, the opposition to this, just for the sake of our position, I don't think is very fruitful. We need to be able to move this plan forward, we need to be able to take it to the next stage where the public will have a say and if the public don't want it, well, we've got to listen to the public, they're our paymasters, not the Welsh Government. And we, we've got to move it forward purely to provide housing for these youngsters who have got nowhere to live. My grandson has had to move to Newport because he couldn't, couldn't afford a house in Caldercot. He works for a, an housing associate, not the one we mentioned, one of the housing associations, but he's had to move to Newport. And my other grandson's had to move to Cardiff. Now, I think I have more of a choice than maybe want to live in the area, but the opportunities aren't here for the youngsters. And if we want to keep the youngsters here and if you want families to bring up their families with more youngsters, we've got to provide this housing. 50%, fantastic, let's go for it, 100% fine, we'll never get 100%, I know. The infrastructure is a question mark, which we've really all got to acknowledge, it's an area where we've got to push and push and we've got to push as a council, 46 councillors, not a few who just want to defeat it for the sake of defeating it. I've said for a long time that we need a link off the M48, the Seven Tunnel Junction, I've said for a long time we need to sort out the B425 in Caldercot, which is, which is the biggest, busiest B road in the county. And I understand where the councillors come from in Chepstow, you want a bypass and maybe I support, I support you, yes, we need to find some ways of helping to get the traffic through the area. Although creating bypasses and roads isn't always the right answer, we've got to try and keep the traffic off the road as well. So I support this, this plan, but I support it on the basis that we've got to take it forward for the public to see what we're talking about, not us sitting in a room this afternoon and chunter about and be for and against, we've got to go forward for the public, for the public of Mammoeshaire and the south of the county particularly in this one. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Eason. Councillor Buckler.
Thank you, Chair. I'm absolutely conscious of the hard work, good intentions and thought that has been put into this draft, our LDP. However, it is perfectly logical to consider carefully the infrastructure implications on these problematic large sites such as Caldercot and Chepstow. This should be the first thing that's considered, not the last. I personally cannot support such a woolly list of wishes. It is not true to say that as a Conservative group, we do not want the appropriate future development for the betterment of Mammoeshaire's residents. We want to see our young stay and thrive in Mammoeshaire. It has to be considered for the whole of Mammoeshaire, not just in large scale developments in an already stressed part of the county. There needs to be a holistic approach to large scale planning for the future and I do not think this is it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Buckler. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to note that I think it's true to say, many councillors have suggested that we do indeed recognise the hard work that's gone into this and I also certainly do. But what I wanted to note is that, as colleagues have said, there has been a huge amount of engagement in this process, a really significant amount of both formal scrutiny and also workshops where members have been invited and have freely given of their time to participate and comment. Councillor Dimmock led a very robust scrutiny process through the, through the scrutiny committee that she chairs. And this matter of infrastructure and of public transport, I'm not just, you know, for me, I'm not talking about traffic and how best we facilitate car users to get from one place to another, because I'm much more interested in the, in the matter about how we have sustainable communal transport solutions, which also speak to the climate issues, which should be our priority in developing any proposals going forward for this county. Because whilst we all concur that it's vital that we provide homes for people that want to and need to settle in Mammoeshaire, we need for those to be, we need for the matter of climate to be taken really seriously so those are sustainable homes and sustainable communities. And let's not enter into this discussion and debate without thinking that for 10 years and more, we haven't been really trying to secure improvements in our existing public transport infrastructure, such as what we call very well the Cinderella Line up towards Chepstow and beyond. And the Caldercot, you know, Caldercot has, you know, I mean, it's ridiculous, it has a train station with hardly any service. But, but all of those things are known quantities and entities and they won't suddenly be solved when we have a deposit plan. And it isn't just a matter of who's going to pay for it, clearly that is more and more of an issue. But some of this has been, has, you know, there are much wider, bigger political reasons why perhaps some things are, have progressed and why some things haven't. And I think that's a real shame, actually, and it, and it's brought to very sharp focus, I think, by the process that we're going through now. So I don't think that we can dismiss these things out of hand and I don't think that clearly, you know, all of us are in, are here to express our concerns on behalf of the people that represent us and that, that we represent, sorry, and then to also take a much wider countywide perspective because we are responsible for the, for the wellbeing of the whole of Mammoeshaire. So we do that, I hope, all of us knowingly and thinking thoughtfully so that whatever we do is reasonable and sensible. But I genuinely think we have got to find a way to address some of these infrastructure gaps that colleagues have spoken about and we need to set out our stall about what it is that we're prioritising. You know, what, what do we actually mean by that? Because when you go to the, and I believe that when we go out to consultation on this, that is the question that our residents will ask. They will say, well, this is all very well, but please can you tell me how you intend this to be a sustainable community when, and I'm not going to go through them again because colleagues have mentioned many of the issues. But also in the last LDP, don't forget, no one thought that Caldercot was a sustainable settlement. All of a sudden, it is a sustainable settlement. So obviously, I'm not party to all those things that have changed, but what is it that has changed? How are we going to explain that to our wider communities? Because this is a long-term vision and investment into the future of this county. And as we all know, we don't exist in a vacuum. So, you know, I have some reservations about how far we've travelled along that route and that, and my disappointment is that some of these things that we've discussed and brought about aren't more significantly reflected. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Mayby, I see you have your hand up again, but you obviously have spoken already. On the basis that you had some technical issues, I think we, I hope, we'll be willing to be generous if you keep it down to literally one minute.
Thank you very much. I was just starting to write it in the chat, it was literally a reply to councillor Chandler's point about the transport plan and just to explain that the new framework is for a regional transport plan. A local one is no longer required, but we want to do one in any case to make sure that the local needs are fully understood. It's planned for 2023. The officers have already done some background work on it, but we put it on pause, waiting for the guidance to come out on the regional plan. That hasn't come yet, but we hope it will soon, but we will be cracking on with it in 2023. So I just wanted you to be aware, it's not forgotten and a lot of background work is going on. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mayby. Councillor McConnell.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm reassured by councillor Mayby's account of the work that's going along with the, on the side of transport and infrastructure. I'm not going to rehearse everything we've said today, but it's very clearly of concern. However, I'd just like to, I'm just going to reflect back to the conversations I've had with members in my, residents in my ward. We talk about statistics and demographics and the economy. I've been talking to very distressed young people and their, and their parents who cannot, they cannot afford to stay where they want to in this county, they'd like to live here and work because they can't afford the housing costs, it's so urgent that we provide that. And I, if, well, we should hang our heads in shame if we don't get this through today and start that process with a very clear message that this council clearly wants to hear about progress made on roads and transport, but that is absolutely no reason to spoke in the wheel of this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McConnell. Councillor John.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. We absolutely share the ambition that the administration set out for house building in this county. Now, when, when people have the chance to purchase a home, they, they have, they have buy-in to their, to their local community. The right to purchase a home is really important and, you know, I think about some of the communities in our ward, councillor McKenna and I, and we've, we've got communities where the average house price is 900,000 pounds. There are people who've lived in Mammoeshaire all their lives who can't afford to buy a home here and are forced to go and, go and live out of county. So absolutely, we share the ambition to build more homes. We need, we need to be offering young people somewhere to live. We do have doubts about whether the arbitrary 50% target is achievable. We, we remain disappointed that Welsh Government rejected our proposal a few years ago for a new settlement in Mammoeshaire. We remain concerned and a number of my colleagues have set out those concerns about infrastructure and councillor Taylor is absolutely right, it's not just about roads, it's about active travel, it's about a sustainable public transport network. And, you know, we've been left on the periphery of the South Wales Metro proposals. We're still not seeing sufficient progress with the, with the walkway station in Meiga. So, and we feel we haven't heard enough from the administration, given we're, we're seven months in now, about the Chepstow bypass. We were working really closely with Gloucestershire, with Mark Harper, with David Davis. I saw the leader's tweet this morning that she had a meeting with our friend, the leader of Gloucestershire Council. So we look forward to hearing, hearing about that and I hope that the Chepstow bypass was a key part of those discussions because this is a key instrumental piece of, of infrastructure. And, you know, there is no conflict between supporting house building in the county, but recognising it's got to be in the right places and it's also got to be matched by investment in, in infrastructure. So I absolutely support the, the comments of colleagues earlier on in, in this debate. I want to hear more from the administration about where we are in terms of setting up our own council-run development company to build on council-owned land. The previous administration had identified a test site next to Caldercot School, but obviously the, we heard the other day in the, in the call-in meeting that the administration is flogging that, that piece of land. As a, as a group, we're not going to be voting down the, the LDP today, but we're absolutely right to raise the concerns that colleagues have done. Another concern in, in housing is the individual cabinet member decision that was taken yesterday on closing the day centre in Abigavenny and that piece of land is going to be flogged for, for housing. That was done quietly by individual cabinet member decision yesterday, no scrutiny, not waiting for the, the review to report early next year. So we could do with some, some answers on that. And of course, another one of the challenges we've got is that great swathes of Mammoeshaire are virtually a no-go area for house building because of decisions taken by, by the Welsh Government. I regret that we haven't seen the urgency from Welsh Government to deal with the challenges around phosphates. I think if, a cynic would think that if phosphates affected cities and valley local authorities, certainly city authorities in the way that the concerns around Tan 15 did. And, you know, we know that there are certain voices in the WLGA that are louder than others. I, I think Welsh Government would have been much quicker to have made some progress on the, the issue of phosphates, which remains a barrier to house building in many parts of Mammoeshaire. And there are concerns that house prices continue, will continue to spiral because we need to, we need to be spreading the house building around, we can't just focus it in certain key, key areas. So there's a number of concerns that, that I've raised there. So there's a number of concerns that, that I've raised there. So we, we share the ambition, but there are significant concerns or we want to see the administration move with faster pace in terms of delivering the infrastructure that our county needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor John. Councillor Garrick.
Thank you, Chair. We've heard a lot about where we should and shouldn't be building houses and the need for homeownership. I'd like... Can't get it any closer. Can I get it turned up? Can you hear me now?
It's better. Thank you.
Okay. So we've heard a lot about people expressing need for homeownership. I'd like to echo what councillor Watts said in why we are doing this. We have a housing crisis in this county. We have families and people and residents in emergency accommodation up and down this county, in bed and breakfast. This week alone, I've spoken to residents who are living in poor accommodation, emergency accommodation, with very poor insulation, very poor heating and facing a very, very nasty winter. We need to build those homes and we need to build social housing and affordable housing. That's the reality of what our residents actually need. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Garrick. Councillor Dimmock, I see you've got your hand up, but we did hear from you early in this discussion, I think you were the third speaker.
I was. Are we, are we now, sorry, Chair, and I didn't mean to interrupt, but I was outraged by councillor Cullard's comment. Are we now limiting councillors to only speak once on a report? Is that what we're saying?
Always have done, apparently. I mean, I'm...
Okay, I will accept your point, but I will argue the fact that councillor Watts has spoken many a times on subjects, but that's okay. Not today, Armand, before you say...
That was, that was before my... Right, hey, you two, shh, 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 no private chats. No, 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 you may not. No, Armand, Armand, no. Dude, no. No little private chatting here. I don't know whether you had more than one contribution before, that was before I was here, but now rules are rules, one contribution only. Councillor Rook.
Thank you ever so much, Chair. I will be supporting this aspirational local development plan. Here in Chappstone, much the same as other areas, we have a desperate need for socially affordable housing. There are over 300 families alone in Chappstone that are looking for that type of accommodation. We also have to remember that this is the accommodation for the families that will be working in the, in the shops, in the hotels, in the, the pubs, in our towns. If we have nobody able to service the people that visit our town, then we won't get people coming to our town. So it's really important that we have affordable housing for those people that, that work within the service industries within our towns. Chappstone itself has lost three hospitality businesses in two weeks. We can't afford to see this continual decline. Part of that, that decline is because we cannot hold on to our young people. Our young people need homes in the area. They are beneficial to our area, they work in, in the shops and, and hospitality industries that we all benefit from. So I will be supporting this, Chair. I will, I, even though I do understand the, the infrastructure problems, I think the need for housing far outweighs people's ability to get to work. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Rook. I don't see any other requests to contribute, so councillor Griffiths, please.
Thanks very much, Chair, and thanks, everyone, for their contribution to what has been an important debate. I stress the point again that what I'm asking you to agree is a draft document as the basis of consultation. It is the beginning of a process, or towards the beginning of the process and not the end of the process. And all the points that have been raised today will be raised again during the consultation and during the scrutiny period that will follow. Somebody's echoing me. Okay. Picking up on some of the individual points, councillor Keir's point on the register, this will be a source of confusion and, and it was in the debate. The published register with the sites in ASCA that we're referring to includes every site that was offered. It does not refer to any sites post-appraisal, if you like, that's in the preferred strategy. So there are sites on that register which we would not be supporting, and that's the point that we need to make, make, make clear to our, our residents. It's been a very important debate on affordability. Councillor Keir raised it, councillor Howarth raised it. I've tried to explain our position previously. If we rely on the model of the private sector housing developer providing affordable housing as a marginal benefit to market housing, then we will not achieve anything like 50%. The example I'm very well aware of in, in Chappstone, Chappstone's been mentioned a lot, but there may be bridge development down there, we had aspirations, I think, of around 30%. We delivered less than half of that because we were relying on the developer to find the margin to provide the affordable housing and they were unable to do so. And that's been the experience of, of, of that reliance consistently. We will only deliver anything like 50% if we work with our own resources, where we've got public land, and when we work with Welsh Government and the registered social landlords to make sure that there is sufficient public resource, social housing grant going into the project to achieve that affordability. You cannot get it out of the private sector. I agree with that. And Welsh Government ministers who say they share our ambition for affordable housing, for social housing, we will have to hold their feet to the fire. They've got to actually come up with a public resource to make that work. It won't work on the back of private sector investment. I think we can all agree on that. Quite rightly, there's been an awful lot in the debates about the need to ensure that the connectivity, the transport infrastructure is in place. And I think we've got an agreed agenda. Again, a lot of reference to Chappstone, but there are other parts of the county, but I'll, I'll reflect on the south of the county at the moment. I think there's an agreed vision across the chamber. The agreed vision includes the fact that we will have substantially, very substantially, radically improved rail transport on that southern corridor. At the moment, on that corridor, we have at times a train frequency of one train every two hours. That is extraordinary and disgraceful. It needs to be, in my view, an ambition that we will get a proper, dare I say, European style commuter service, a metro service of four trains an hour. So getting that on the core metro line, I'm very pleased about that. What we have got as an administration in writing is a commitment from Transport for Wales that within five years, they will increase that frequency to two trains an hour. It's not everything that I want, but heavens above, it's a lot better than one train every two hours, which is what you'll find on the Lidney to Newport line. So two trains an hour within five years, that has been achieved, that is on the public record. So those who are saying that we're delivering nothing are not recognising that fact. If we're going to get those train lines in place in that southern corridor, we've got to make sure that people can connect to them without using their cars and clogging up the local roads and so doing. So active travel is not a nice-to-have. It's an essential part of the transport infrastructure by which we can use the public transport without clogging up our roads. And the investment that Welsh Government has put into Monmashia because of the partnership that we've offered as a council into active travel is substantial and will make an extraordinary difference. So let's just say, not regard that as peripheral. Put it alongside, in that southern corridor, the enhancement to the rail structure and it'll begin to make a difference. We have an agenda for roads. I'm as disappointed as anyone else that I can't get a reply out of the Welsh Government on the High Beach roundabout. We wrote in, I think in response to councillor Brown's motion in July, and we still don't have a response. I'm disappointed by that. At least we have, I sometimes try to persuade myself that the reason we haven't had a response was that it, there wasn't an easy response to give. If they wanted to say no, they could have said no quickly. But we'll keep pressing and it's untimely and unfortunate that we've not had a response. It's only a hundred thousand, for heaven's sake, to take it forward, and that's the point I'll continue to make. But that will be a small part of the jigsaw. I actually think the new junction, or the proposed junction from Caldercot to the M48, what is now the M48, will be crucial. And we've written again to Welsh Government only in the last week, making, clarifying the case, because they seemed incapable of understanding it, clarifying the case for that. There is, as many have raised, the case for a relief road, a bypass for Chappstone. That is not in the hands of any one government. It needs a partnership between government in England and government in Wales. It needs a partnership between this local authority and local authorities on the other side of the River Wye and the River Severn. It is significant that the leader and I met with the leader and deputy leader of Gloucestershire yesterday. We have agreed that we will continue to work together to press both governments to invest in such a relief road. I think it is significant that only in the last couple of weeks Gloucestershire have had assurances, have had funding assurances, actual money on the table to progress their objectives for improved access to the M5 in the north of Gloucestershire, Junction 10 in particular. That's been a big ambition of theirs and has undoubtedly been a higher priority for them than the relief road in Chappstone. So the fact that they've achieved that, I think, will make them an even more forceful partner with us in bidding for that relief road. When England's government takes an interest in that relief road, we've got to bring Welsh Government to the same table and getting them there together, and we will be aiming to do that. But nobody here imagined that with all the lobbying in the world, that this is going to arrive in time for this replacement development plan to be in place. It is a long-term project, and I do feel that there have been occasions when expectations have been raised that this can be delivered within one council term in, in an unreasonable way. It is a long-term project and we've got to make sure that things which can be done quickly, the High Beach roundabout to the M48, the improved rail structure, the active travel, that they don't wait for the Holy Grail of, of, of a relief road. We continue with that, but so much needs to be done in the meantime. In terms of the importance of going forward, several councils have, have mentioned it, the housing need, everyone has said it, we've got communities where there is no hope of young families born in the area wanting to be in the area of entering the housing market. We've got to correct that. And going forward with this local development plan will be a significant way to making progress there. It will help those needing at home. It will also, as councillor Rook, my other responsibilities include the economy. We all have an ambition that Monmashia County is a productive economy, a productive county. None of us want any sense that we become a county of retirement. We want to be a county of active work and we need young people housed in our county for that to be achieved. That is the importance. We want dynamic town centres. We can only have dynamic town centres, as councillor Rook said, if we've got Labour able to work in those town centres. Those are what we need to achieve. Taking this forward, a document which is by no means complete, which will improve over the next year through continued discussion, but taking this forward will allow us to achieve those wider objectives. And I urge you to support the recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Councillors, we'll now move to a vote on whether to accept this plan. It is now 15:47. We're going to take a break. We will resume business at bob on four. policy, item 6.3. Councillor Grokot.
No, it's councillor Thomas.
It's councillor Thomas. Are you sure you don't want to go councillor Grokot? Go on. Councillor Thomas.
Okay, Diarca Dairid, thank you Chair. Obviously safeguarding vulnerable people is central to the council and requires strong leadership and governance underpinned by a corporate policy. The regular review and endorsement by council of the corporate safeguarding policy is an integral component of the governance framework. The corporate safeguarding policy sets out the framework through which the council supports a preventative approach to safeguarding and protects children and adults who are at risk from harm, abuse or neglect. It is of relevance to all services operating within Monmouthshire, elected members, paid and unpaid workforce, residents of and visitors to Monmouthshire. For the corporate safeguarding policy to be kept up to date, it is regularly reviewed so that it reflects changes in the legal or policy framework, the local and national context and developments within good practice guidelines. The review has seen some key revisions in areas such as safeguarding training, exploitation and modern day slavery, licensing arrangements and guidelines for school governing bodies. Revisions to the corporate safeguarding policy require the endorsement of full council and that it is then enacted. My recommendation strongly obviously is that the council endorses the revised corporate safeguarding policy. Diarca Dairid, thank you.
Thank you councillor Thomas. Not seeing any requests to speak to this? Okay. Why are they not showing up here? Okay, councillor Chandler, please.
Thank you Chair. Pardon me. I'm going to recommend to fellow members that we reject this proposal. I'm sorry to say that. I noticed that it's not been scrutiny committee and I think when we're getting a revised policy and as councillor Thomas just said, there's been a number of revisions to the policy, I think it's incumbent that it should be going to scrutiny committee before it comes to full council. I think if it had gone to scrutiny committee, I think there are some issues that could have come forward. For example, if this is a revision of the policy and yet as we go through it, it still refers to select committees, it doesn't refer to the new structure of the council, which obviously is a scrutiny committee based system. So even just on basic terminology and basic structure of the council, it's not been updated appropriately. I also think that if it had gone to scrutiny committee, it could have been interrogated a little bit more in terms of actually what some of the elements of the policy actually mean because there is a level of vagueness and ambiguity about some of these things. So where it talks about the scope of the policy, to what is its support, it talks about contractors, but there's no clarity about whether that means some of the community organisations that we fund, for example. Do they count as a contractor or are they a partner? So there's a lack of definition in some of those areas. It also talks about training, a requirement for training, but it doesn't talk about actually how that training is provided and about whether the council is supporting the training of volunteers that don't work directly for the council but work for some of the community organisations that we support. And I think these are important areas as we depend on partnerships with charities and community organisations across the county. We need to be clear about how we're supporting them and if we see safeguarding as an important component of our work with vulnerable people, with all of our population, then we need to make sure that actually a safeguarding policy is not just a piece of paper that we have a legal obligation to endorse, but actually is something that means something and actually delivers something that we can hold the council to account for. At the moment, I don't see that we can hold the council to account for the delivery of this policy. And as I said, I go back to the thing, if this had gone to a scrutiny committee, these issues would have been covered there. So I think on a point of principle, we should vote against this and ask it to go to scrutiny so that it can be properly examined and then come back to council in due course. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chandler. Councillor Jones, Penny Jones.
Thank you Chair. I just don't recognise what has just been said. This is a document that has been used and scrutinised by inspectors beforehand, the last document, and found to be in good order. I do not recognise the fact that there's nothing about training or how training is implemented or any of these issues that have been brought up. There may be something about the wording select committee rather than scrutiny, but you know, that is quite minor compared with the main points of the policy, which is protection. And, excuse me, I welcome this updated version. It's including the clarity of the links, that the independent settings are now required to undertake a safe, sorry, the independent settings of the people we work with, partners. The drivers' checks are now six monthly instead of two yearly. I mean, these are incredibly forward-thinking, thank goodness. It's something that's been vital and that volunteers are now on the kinetic system. I have just mentioned a couple here, but I feel that this document, based on what we've worked with and what has worked and what has been passed by inspector prior to this term, I feel that it really has gone forward. And this policy is relevant to everybody across the board who is part of Monmouthshire. So we are going to endorse the revised corporate safeguarding policy that supports effective safeguarding in Monmouthshire County Council and promotes good practice. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Jones. Councillor Pavya.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Just want to pick up a question just in relation to what the cabinet member said about local and national context and obviously in relation to the policy where it focuses on the safeguarding of children. Given the two recently published reports, firstly the independent inquiry into child sexual abuse, which was published in October, the full report, and obviously the Logan Moangie Child Practice Review, which was published last week, does the cabinet member believe that this policy should be reevaluated potentially through these two new lenses? I appreciate in relation to the Logan Moangie review, it's a different safeguarding board area which has been affected, but given the learning identified within both reviews, which is intended to generate professional organisational learning, promote improvements in future inter-agency and safeguarding practice, I think these two new variables do need consideration. I think unless the cabinet member says, well, you know, the Gwynne Safeguarding Board is going to pick this up as a region and particularly examine the multi-agency interface, which was identified as a key failing in the Moangie case, then I do think it does need consideration. But I'd be interested to hear the cabinet member's response. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pavya. Councillor Howarth.
Thank you Chair. I'd just like to pick up on councillor Chandler's point there of the select committee just having a view over the document there. Would this be cross-cutting or would it just go to people select and if the chair is on today, was it on your forward work programme? Has this document just been put into full council at the last minute? Or has it been on the work programme for some time and actually the select committee have had, or select committees have had a view of this and had the chance to either not take it before select or have asked for it to go to select? I'd just like some clarity on that before I proceed on deciding whether I support councillor Chandler or not on that respect of it. I don't agree with councillor Penny Jones on the aspect of, because it's been to some quango within the within the system. With the council, we set policy, we set guidelines and it's our responsibility to actually look at documents before we actually agree them. So I don't agree with councillor Jones there on the direction that she wanted to take with this document. They're not signed and sealed until we endorse them. So councillor Chandler, you are right, but if it has been on your work programme in the last few months, if it hasn't been picked up by members, so be it. If it hasn't been on there, it's a last minute document put in to come before council. I know how the system works, madam Chairman, and I'd just like some direction really of officers really. Has it been on there or hasn't been on there? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howarth. All right, I don't see any other requests to contribute. So councillor Thomas.
Yes, and thanks councillors therefore for your comments about this report. And obviously, you know, I take this report very seriously, as do my professional colleagues and the chief officer Jane Rogers. In terms of minor, the use of the word select, I think we're all getting used to using the word scrutiny rather than select. And that is just a minor sort of issue. In terms of setting up the training and links with charities etcetera, you know, in a report like this, this sets out the broad areas of responsibility and what happens. It will be difficult to go down into the very detailed training that goes on. It is obviously the responsibility of chief officers in their particular areas, whether it's, you know, highways and planning or whether it's schools to make sure that that training is implemented and that it does go ahead and that people are held, you know, to account. I certainly note councillor Penny Jones's comments about it in terms of it having been through sort of outside scrutiny inspectorate, outside of the authority, taking on those points and looking at it. Certainly, you know, the two reports that councillor Pavia mentions are very recent and particularly the tragic case of the Moangie little boy in Bridgend, which was obviously tragic. That literally came out last week. So we certainly will take account of that and certainly that, the recommendations of that will be looked at by the Child Protection Service within Monmouthshire County Council and any recommendations will be taken on board. And in fact, Welsh Government are not calling for an overall review of child protection policies across Wales. They're obviously looking for better implementations of policies that actually, you know, are there at the moment. So I'm confident that this policy is robust and certainly the child safeguarding report went through full council during the last council meeting and was accepted. I would like to bring in at this point Jane Rogers, who's the chief officer for social services and obviously former senior officer for children's services, if she wants to add any technical points. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Thomas and good afternoon everyone. Yeah, no, I would, I mean, from my point of view, the policy sets out the broad cornerstones of how we implement safeguarding within the authority. So whilst reports that are issued are extremely important in influencing how we understand good practice, we routinely through the auspices of the regional safeguarding arrangements, look into reports and understand how practice needs to be adjusted or processes need to be adjusted in response. But the broad safeguarding cornerstones remain in place and more often than not, the, what reviews and inquiries confirm is that getting those broad cornerstones correct are your fundamentals when it comes to safeguarding. So whilst elements of practice and process changes, broad cornerstone of policy by and large do not. So I would ask members just to take account of that in their decision making and also to reference, as did councillor Thomas, that the annual evaluation report into safeguarding was taken through scrutiny and subsequently for council in October.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Jane, I appreciate that. I don't think I have anything more to add. As I say, I am confident in the report, but obviously it's up to councillors to vote on whether they believe it is a robust policy. It's certainly, in my perspective, I come from a background of teaching for nearly 20 years, where obviously safeguarding is paramount, but particularly on a personal level, I think safeguarding is one of the key responsibilities that I hold within, as cabinet member for this area. So it is something that I hold very dear to my heart and it's something that I, if I felt in any way it wasn't robust, then I would obviously, you know, not be happy to bring it forward. Thanks. And it certainly wasn't rushed, thanks.
Thank you councillor Thomas. Councillors, will I move to vote on whether to endorse this corporate safeguarding plan? Chair.
With due respect Chair, I haven't had an answer to my question, so I would like an answer to my question. I know councillor Thomas says it may be part of a document which has gone before scrutiny, but I want to know whether this document was on the work programme.
Okay councillor Howarth, councillor Howarth, as I understand it, our monitoring officer has sent you a message explaining that you will get an answer to this question in due course. And I'm sorry councillor Taylor, I'm really sorry, but I did miss you.
Right Chair, I was just going to say, can I get a response as to whether it has been through scrutiny or not? And as you, sorry, you've just said what, you were councillor Howarth has had a message, but I think it is an important point as to whether it was on this, it's been on the scrutiny work programme or not. So that would help me in thinking about what, you know, how I respond to the report. Thank you Chair.
councillor Taylor.
I think for those councillors looking for clarity on that to inform the way that they take a position now, I think you should assume that it has not been through scrutiny because we don't know that it has been. That said, not all of the policies that come to council need to go through scrutiny. That really is a matter for the scrutiny committee guided by the scrutiny chair in terms of how they build their own work programme. So as we sit here today, I can't be sure that it has gone through scrutiny, but that in itself is not a reason that you cannot consider the policy.
Thank you. Okay councillors, now we'll move to a vote on this. Councillors, that has been carried, so we will now move on to motions. So our first motion, councillor Penny Jones.
Thank you Chair. I'm presenting this motion on behalf of Raglan Community Council, of which I am a member, and the residents of Raglan, who have for many years asked for a safety study and subsequent safety improvements to be implemented on the stretch of road between the Raglan A40 roundabout and the A40 A449 interchange, often referred to as the Raglan bypass. Over the years, there's been an increase in accidents, especially on the crossing to and from the Old Monmouth Road. These accidents have become more frequent and more serious and this is a request to help us speed up the process by Welsh Government to determine the safety procedures that need to be put in place. Over the past 10 years have been requests, letters and a petition sent to various ministers, all of whom have stated that a safety survey will be carried out in the next financial year. The pandemic notwithstanding, this has never come to fruition. And in the meantime, with the completion of the A465 Head to the Valleys road, traffic has increased considerably as it accesses the M4 via the A449. The size and amount of traffic and subsequent speed is of great concern. The accidents have all involved different types of transport, including a school bus, a mother taking her children to school, a trailer and various other methods, means of transport. The severity, as I said, has been increasing and the fear is, the very real fear is, there will be fatalities. We have requested a speed restriction and various changes to be made, but nothing can happen until Welsh Government have carried out a safety survey. The residents and members of Raglan and the surrounding areas such as Mitchell Troy are increasingly concerned for their safety and the safety of all A40 road users. We would welcome any support we can get from the cabinet member to initiate a study as soon as possible. The motion is, this council notes the longstanding concerns about road safety between the Raglan A40 roundabout and the A40 A449 interchange. It agrees that the appropriate cabinet member will write to the Welsh Government to urge ministers to expedite a fully funded road safety study in 2324 and commit to delivering any recommended road safety improvements without delay. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Jones. councillor McKenna.
Thank you Chair. Thirty years ago, my auntie had the misfortune of having to tell one of her neighbours that their son had tragically been killed in a road traffic accident along the stretch of the A40 that we are talking about today. Thirty years. Think about that. Thirty years is a long time. Thirty years of fatalities, people sustaining life changing injuries and near misses. Thirty years of people's lives being changed forever. We should not be sat here all these years down the road, still discussing the safety of these junctions on the A40. It is time that change happens. With anything in life, people have a difference in opinion. For example, should pineapple be on pizza? You will always get a variety of opinions. One thing that I have noticed when talking to residents about this section of the A40 is that there is never a difference in opinion when the question is asked, is this section of the A40 safe? The answer is always no. I am extremely grateful and I'm sure I speak on behalf of my fellow ward councillor councillor Richard John, Raglan Ward Member councillor Penny Jones, Raglan Community Council and Mitchell Troy Community Council for the proactive approach that our MonCC officers have recently taken to hopefully start to put measures in place to make the roads safer for all road users and thank you to all involved. I will put my hand up and acknowledge that we are never going to make this stretch of road 100% safe because we cannot fully influence driver behaviour. But I do believe that there are lots of small things that can be done to make the roads safer than it already is. Every little change we make will help to influence this. I think that it is important to note that this is a complex stretch of road with several junctions, several lanes, a roundabout at one end and fast moving traffic coming off the A449 A40. It's imperative that as a council, we push Welsh Government to carry out the road safety audit and then once done, that we continue to push for change to make this interchange safer for all. It is worth pointing out, as councillor Penny Jones has, that this Raglan bypass is a short stretch of major west to east Wales highway, which acts as an alternative to the M4. With the new Heads of the Valleys road being built, this section of road has got busier and busier over the years. Yet it is almost like the forgotten piece of the jigsaw when the redesign of the Heads of the Valleys road was planned. We have a piece of road that is not fit for purpose for the volume of traffic that now uses it. I have grave concerns for the residents of Raglan, Trugair and Dindestow, who have to cross these dangerous junctions on a daily basis to get to school or to work. Just this summer alone, there were three major accidents that occurred when vehicles were trying to cross. Indeed, I was only speaking to a friend yesterday whom I went to school with in Raglan Primary School. He'd lived in Dindestow all his life and he unfortunately received life changing injuries when trying to cross this section of road. I'm not a road safety expert, so I will leave the solutions to those that are. However, I am concerned with the lack of clear and concise data that is recorded by the police, ambulance, fire brigade, air ambulance etcetera. I feel that this needs to improve, as does the eight month lag in the data being received. The fact that we have been told that very few major accidents and near misses have taken place at these junctions over the past five years is simply not true and inaccurate. Furthermore, it is not morally right that there has to be fatalities in order for action to be taken. There have been fatalities and there have been people who have experienced life changing injuries. For Welsh Government to say that there isn't the funding simply is not good enough. I know that Raglan Community Council and in particular their clerk Adrian Edwards, who I know is here today, have worked tirelessly on this, as have some members of Mitchell Troy Community Council alongside local residents. They are passionate for change, just like I am. And therefore I second councillor Penny Jones's motion for our cabinet member to write to Welsh Government to ensure that the safety review takes place in the next financial year and that road safety improvements take place following that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKenna and thank you for seconding that motion. councillor Mayby.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, and thank you councillor Jones and councillor McKenna. I absolutely share your concerns about safety at this interchange. And I can certainly confirm that I'll write to Welsh Government to ask them to make sure that the funding becomes available in 2023 to 24 for the safety study and to press ahead as soon as possible with implementation, subject of course to consideration by the local community officers and elected representatives of the findings of that study. Please, please be reassured that we haven't sat on our hands in the meantime. Our officers are taking the initiative to progress the one change that we're able to do ourselves as a county council, which is to start the process of preventing a right turn out of Monmouth Road onto the A40. I know you'll be aware of these details, but for the sake of other members to hear that, it's a shorter term measure, but it's something that we can hopefully do sooner. And we're totally aware of how awful this accident black spot is. This right turn process, that also is subject to Welsh Government safety audits, but we're hoping for being able to go to consultation in January, February 2023 as part of amendment order eight. So in summary, I absolutely support your motion and I'm really shocked to hear that it's been 30 years of trouble. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mayby. councillor Powell.
Thank you Chair. I fully support this motion. For many years, I used that road the two or three times a week before I retired and always it seemed dangerous. It's not just the turning right, it's when vehicles come off the 449 to go on to there, they don't realise how close to turnings they are and they come up off there and it's not visible that the people aren't not just turning right to go on to that road, but the ones coming across from the other side, across to go into Raglan. And strangers don't realise that those junctions are going to be there. There isn't much warning about it and consequently they go up onto the road and opened out because it looks like a main dual carriageway, not realising that there are people crossing, not just vehicles, but people and bicycles as well. The only thing I could think to do, but I mean, I'm no expert, I'm no engineer, but if they had traffic lights there, they'd have to slow down for traffic lights and at least you could filter it out so that everybody got a turn and surely that would be far more safer. But I don't know, I'm no engineer and they'll probably say it's not possible. I had the similar thing when I was trying to get, well, I did eventually get the 30 mile limit, it's now become 20, but 30 mile limit going into Avicavenny, near where I live. And when I spoke to the minister down at Welsh Government, I was told, well, nobody's been killed there yet. And I thought, because I was trying to get a pedestrian crossing, is that what we have to do? We have to have lots of people killed before they do anything? We have to have lots of people killed before they do anything? It's ludicrous. I think it's so important, there's so many people trying to take their children to school across from the country areas apart from other people, that we have to put their safety at front. And I hope that our Cabinet member will send a letter to the Welsh Government and get things moving. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Powell. Councillor John.
Thank you very much. Well, can I associate myself with the comments of councillor Jones and councillor McKenna? And I won't repeat the points they've made, but they've made a very eloquent case, a very compelling case for intervention on this road. And I do feel reassured by the very constructive contribution of the Cabinet member and I thank her for that. I also want to put on record our thanks to Mark Hand and Graham Kinsella, who've been really helpful and supportive in this as well, as well as, as Jane said, colleagues from Raglan and Mitchell Troy Community Councils. We're grateful to the members of the public who've engaged in this and there are three quite dangerous right-hand turns there, as colleagues have set out, and we really welcome the proposal that officers have put forward, certainly to remove one of those three right-hand turns, but we really need some progress from Welsh Government to address the remaining safety concerns on this piece of road. So thank you for the agreement, send the letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor John. Councillor Howells.
Yeah, thanks. Just to say, I'm very grateful for bringing this motion. I fully support it. I take my son to football up there once a week and I can really appreciate the dangers that are there. I can't begin to think if you've got to do that on a daily basis, the added danger to that really. It really is good to hear that the motion's been brought forward and also good to hear from councillor Mayby that MCC are taking action to mitigate some of those dangers. So I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Howells. Councillor Jones.
Thank you. I think everything's been said, Chair, but I'd just like to thank councillor Mayby for her reassurance that this will be done, that our requests will be carried out and that the Welsh Government will receive a letter. So thank you, councillor Mayby, and for your support and for the support of Monmouthshire County Council officers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Councillors, we're now going to move to a vote on this motion. That motion has carried unanimously. So now we move on to item 7.2. Councillor Jackie Strong.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, council, for allowing me to put this motion to you this afternoon. I speak on behalf of the residents of Cawdychot and the motion is as follows. MCC notes the threat to the continuing operation of the main post office in Cawdychot due to the surrender of the lease by the Morrison Supermarket Company, which currently hosts the post office business. MCC understands the importance of maintaining a main post office service in Cawdychot and it welcomes the work already undertaken to protect this service and commits itself to taking steps to support the continuation of this service in the town. For councillors that aren't from Severnside, I'm just going to give a brief background to the homeless state of the post office, basically. Some councillors will be aware that McColl's went into administration and were taken over by Morrisons in May of this year. At that time, McColl's staff, both the post office staff and the shop staff in the town, thought that their jobs were safe. Then, early November, we have an announcement from Morrisons to say that they are closing over a hundred McColl's shops and one of which is in Cawdychot. Now, Cawdychot is significant because it actually houses the post office. This means that this loss of a main post office in Cawdychot and the reduced level of service, we haven't got a main post office, we won't have a main post office between Newport and Chepstow, and this will have a disastrous effect on both residents, small businesses, churches and local pubs and small businesses. Many of the residents really value the service given by the post office manager Tania and her team and feel that this vital service should continue. I'm aware at the moment that the post office is looking for a replacement postmaster, postmistress, and they would like the post office to remain in the town. However, I welcome the steps taken by MCC officers to support this and I know that there are things going on behind the scenes that we're not party to. I want to take the opportunity to comment on Tania and her team, as well as the other staff at McColl's, for their loyal and valued service to the people of Cawdychot. They all face an uncertain future and are facing redundancies, facing redundancies at any time of the year is difficult, but particularly before Christmas. The post office in Cawdychot is a thriving business. It's not similar to other post offices that are closed because of lack of use. This post office is a business that needs to be supported and continued in our town and I ask members of the council to support my motion or the motion from Severnside. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Strong. Councillor Keir.
Thank you very much, Chair, and I very much support this motion. I actually would like to make an amendment to it as well. I and my fellow councillor, councillor Howells, fully understand what you're going through because we went through this in Usk. So I'll explain the background, but my amendment to this motion reads, in addition, that the council commits also to the long-term future of the UK's only-run, council-run post office in Usk. The background for councillors who may not know was that Usk lost its three banks and its post office in a relatively short space of time and indeed the last bank and the last post office closures were announced in the same month. The recent closures announced by HSBC in Abigavenny, Pontypool and previous to that, Monmouth highlights the lack of services that are available for the elderly, which is such essential and for the businesses, the same reasons that have been highlighted. The council support, Monmouthshire County Council support the running of this post office financially, as does Us Town Council. And in year one, the previous administration agreed £4,000 to support it on the basis that that was matched by Us Town Council, which it has. Last year, my understanding from the figures, that it broke even and this year at the moment, it's projected to be a similar loss of £8,000, split £4,000 each, and that the Town Council has committed again by way of its draft budget to support the continued running. It is an essential service in Usk and I would urge the council councillors to support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Keir. Do I have a second for this amendment? Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Howells.
Yeah, sorry, I was just going to second that really. Yeah, but I obviously fully support Tony Keir's, councillor Tony Keir's amendment. It really is a, it was such a loss to lose the banks and initially the post office. We've seen a huge decline in footfall from neighbouring villages that are now going elsewhere to the post office and that has its knock-on effect onto the existing shops that are there, they're all finding it hard. So I do really support this and, you know, the community aspect of having a post office in town that, you know, supports the elderly in particular who are not able to do online banking or anything like that. So I do support this amendment. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, councillor Howells. Would anybody else like to speak to the amendment? No? In which case, yeah, we will. Councillor Garrick.
Sorry, I wasn't quick enough. It is, we do need to remind all members that we are in a difficult position at the moment in terms of UK and Welsh funding and that we do have an incredibly large shortfall in the next year. However, we have considered where we are with supporting us post office and we would like to continue to support that. So I don't see a reason why we couldn't support this amendment ourselves.
Thank you, councillor Garrick. Sudden flurry of people who now want to speak to the amendment. Councillor Howarth.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I both support the amendment to a point, but I think as a council now, we're putting our cards on the table here to something that actually we may not need to support on the basis of is the post office counters are actually looking into finding a postmaster, a postmistress, whatever, whatever, in a prime location or even a location in Cawdychot, actually. That is their job or their forward ambition to do. If that doesn't develop, then, yes, I quite agree that actually then we should look at doing something with our partners in Cawdychot, which is the Town Council. But at the moment, we're at a point where we don't know, we're in an unknown point. So if we commit ourselves today to support Cawdychot in providing a post office in their town, premises, all them things will have to come to fruition. And if it's support of a sum of money, which has just been quartered by Usk, that the council will have to find.
Chair, a bit of order.
Yes, of course, go on.
Yes, not to do with the conversation, but our process is not right. We haven't decided on the amendment to talk about yet, have we?
We, that's, yes, sorry, I was just answering you in the, I was just answering you, councillor Taylor, yes. We are, yes, councillor Howarth, I was inviting you to speak on the amendment, you know, we are still discussing the amendment, we haven't taken a vote on it yet. On that basis, are you finished with your contribution, councillor Howarth, do you think? Because I am asking you to speak specifically about the and Usk amendment. Yeah.
But Chair, I also need to make a personal interest as a member of Cawdychot Town Council because some reference in the amendment to funding support from local, from the community council.
Okay.
Just a personal interest, Chair.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I think that's my point, Chair. I think the amendment is too, is probably too broad, is what we're doing here because even the Cabinet member spoke about finances, et cetera. So I do support the amendment, but, you know, I mean, to a point, is what do I support then? What am I supporting? Thank you, Chair.
Councillors, good afternoon. Matt Phillips, Chief Officer, People and Governance, and Monitoring Officer. So I'm just going to, I've put the amendment in the chat for anyone who's not seen it, but the amendment leaves the motion as was, as submitted by councillor Strong, and then simply adds at the end of it, MCC commits to the long-term future of the UK's only council-run post office in Usk. I hope that assists. Thanks.
Repeat that again, Chair, just mention Usk, was it?
So we're talking specifically about the addition of and Usk post office in the amendment. Good. Councillor Bond and C you have your hand up to speak on the amendment. Is it specific to the and Usk?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm wondering if it should be considered separately as it is to do with budget. The actual motion is about supporting insofar as officers supporting whatever, not monetarily supporting at this time, and the amendment is about monetarily supporting. So I think it's two different things for me. Thank you.
Councillor Bond, if, you know, obviously, if that's how you feel, your obvious course of action would be to vote against the amendment rather than to go down as being a separate question.
Even though it's a significant issue and needs to be.
Even though, yes. Councillor McConnell.
Yes, I think I'm picking up on councillor Bond's concern about the amendment. I think it's inappropriate for us to bring piecemeal individual budget considerations to this meeting. Given the difficult situation that we face at the moment, I think it's inappropriate. That should be considered. We, I'm very happy to support the future of Usk, but I'm not happy that this council should commit itself to financially supporting anything as a one decision while we're busy looking at a broad budget going forward. So I won't be supporting the amendment.
Are we able to move to a vote? Because we normally, we've looked on whether we're going to accept the amendment and then discuss it.
Okay, yes, 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 we can take a vote on.
Chair, I had my hand up.
Not this again. We can take a vote on whether to move to a vote.
I had my hand up, I did declare.
Yeah, councillor Easton, we've heard from you multiple times already.
No, you haven't, not on this matter. I've declared an interest, that's all.
If you have another point to make, and please not another point of order, go ahead.
No, it's another point of order, I'm just watching my hand, that's all. I see the merit in the amendment, but I don't think it would work in this case because we're talking specifically about Cawdychot, we could visit that later on in the future. That's simply my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Easton. Okay, councillors, we are now going to move to vote on whether to accept the amendment as written in your chat box.
Chair.
Yes, councillor.
Sorry to interrupt. It doesn't allow me to vote. It's saying there's a problem reaching this app. Is that just, is that my, is that a connection problem for me or has everyone else got an error in the?
Let's see, is anybody else having that problem voting?
I did to begin with, but then if you click retry, then it reloaded.
Okay, I just didn't want it to close it down. I'll try that. Sorry for interrupting.
That's all right.
Well, councillors, that, we have a majority of that anyway, so the amendment is passed. We're now going to return to discussion of the motion as amended. So I'm gonna go back up. I had councillor Stevens, so do you wish to speak to the motion as amended?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, sorry, Chair, isn't there normally now going to be a new bar to allow us to record whether we want to speak on the amendment because the amendment has now been one?
No. We just. It's a bit confusing.
Hi, councillor Taylor, we're just returning to the original hands-up function to speak about the motion as amended, so I can see that you're number eight on the list to speak.
Councillor Stevens.
Thank you, Chair. Just to add, councillor Strong have put in a motion. We had a chat with the manager of the post office and I was astounded that one day last week, there were sixty sacks of mail collected from just this one local post office and that will give you an insight into how busy this post office is. A few months ago, everybody was given notice about our last remaining bank, Lloyds Bank in Cawdychot, they're closing, I believe it's January or February. So as county and town councillors, we told our residents, well, it would be okay because we can use the post office. And as councillor Strong said, there's local businesses, especially all the social clubs, sports clubs, they all use that post office now for banking. Also, if you bank with any bank, you can also use the post office service. There's a pay-in-in acceptance, which is really easy, and it's very distressing to think this post office will not be there anymore. And also, the post office increase in footfall has been massive since the word of the Lloyds Bank was closing. And for the size and the population of Cawdychot, we've had. And for the size and the population of Caldecott, we've had so many distressing emails and telephone calls. What are people going to do? How are they going to get their pension? How are they going to pay their business accounts in? So I would like to second councillor Strong's motion, and I'll leave it there with you all as members, please. And we're not sure how we're going to work out, but we desperately, desperately need something. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stevens. Councillor Dimmock.
Thank you, Chair. Can we, can you just confirm, we are now just discussing the original motion and not the amendment? Just so I'm clear.
Yeah, we're discussing the motion as amended, so the amendment passed and now we're discussing the motion with the addition of the amendment.
Yeah, I too would like to support councillor Strong and thank her for bringing this to full council. Caldecott Post Office Services residents and businesses, that's it within my ward, and I've been contacted by a number of concerned people who use this branch. As we know, post offices are the beating heart of communities. Councillor Taylor has fought a really hard campaign in securing the post office in Meiga, and it's been very much appreciated by the residents in both Meiga and Undee. And I know Port Squier, anyone in the seven, this corner of the Seven Side area, this would have a detrimental impact for individuals and businesses. And I do fear that it's a very slippery slope for the future of other shops once a post office is gone, and it could be the final nail in the coffin for Caldecott. So it's imperative the local authority, as the local authority, we must ensure we can do all we can to continue supporting this service. So thank you ever so much councillor Strong.
Thank you councillor Dimmock. Councillor Griffiths.
Thanks so much.
I have my hand up function, Chair. I'd like to speak.
No, Tony, I have you down to speak after.
You don't, maybe, okay.
I have, you're further down the list, I will come to you. Councillor Griffiths.
Thanks very much, and I will be supporting the motion. I want to thank councillor Strong, councillor Stevens and the local members for the work that they've done, the very effective work they've done as the local ward councillors. They brought this issue to my attention as the cabinet member with the responsibility for the economy, for town centres. They introduced me to the postmaster at the Caldecott post office. I clearly understand that this is a very effective business, a very viable business, and one that the community of Caldecott wants to sustain. The effect of that meeting that I've had is that I've been able to work with our officers, our business support officers, who are working with the post manager, they are working with other businesses in Caldecott to test whether it's possible for other businesses to bid to host the post office as Morisons, who have now taken over, withdraw the premises from the post office there. I need to stress that we are not guaranteeing a future for any post office, I need to stress that we're not committing any council funds for this venture, but we're undertaking our proper role in exercising business support to test the capacity of businesses in Caldecott to host a post office, and that's how we'll take this forward.
Thank you councillor Griffiths. Councillor Bond.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't realise I had my mic on, and I do apologise. Thank you, Chair. I just want to support this, we're all working together in Caldecott, although it's in councillor Stevens' ward, we're all working together because it's such a vital, as has already been said, provision or opportunity for everybody, and opportunity, service for everybody, especially apparently the footfall fall and use has gone up dramatically, as we say, older people and less able people being able to get the post office, not necessarily able to go online to the banks, are digitally excluded, but also people who are really finding the cost of living crisis terrible, and just going in to take five, 10 pounds out at a time instead of, and that's gone up dramatically apparently, because people just can't afford to get significant amount of money out of a building site or a bank. So really, really important to Caldecott, and we're all working together with the support also of our local MP, which is Jessica Morden, who's been very supportive and writing letters to gain extra money from the Westminster government for the post office, and we've been talking to the post office managers and external resourcing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bond. Councillor Easton, now we come to you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I didn't, I can't find my hand up function, but there we are. Yes, I support all, I support this amendment, I support the motion where we stand, but we've got to consider that the wider aspects of Caldecott Post Office and the effect it has on the community, Meiga, Undee, Roggett, Covent, where we do have sub-post office and we do have a small post office in the west end of Caldecott. These post offices and the Caldecott Post Office support the parcels office and also the letter sorting office. It could be a thin end of the wedge if we lose the main delivery of parcels from the main post office, well, it's 60 or 70 a day. It would mean that those parcels would have to be collected and go somewhere else if they weren't picked up in Caldecott. So if, for example, they had to go to Chepstow, I don't know what the facilities are in Chepstow, or if they had to have another arrangement, it could put job losses at the main sorting office and main parcel office, because they're all integral in the post office system in Seven Side. So it's very, it's important to maintain this full post office on that basis, because it could cause redundancies for job losses within the periphery, not the sub-post office because they are run in a different way, but the main sorting office in Caldecott could be put under threat if we don't have the business effort to work on. So it's an holistic system and we need to support it fully. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Easton. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. So I probably, I've worked very closely with post office on several occasions where we've had very different issues to what you're experiencing or what's being experienced in Caldecott at the present time. Here in Meiga, we have a main post office, it was reclassified as a result of our community campaign, where we did indeed work with the authority to draw attention to the matter. However, and I have to tell you, I concur with everything all members are saying about how vital post office is, particularly in respect of the loss of other financial institutions, and also the really important role they play as a destination. And therefore, we have seen, because we've had a number of issues locally, we've now got a temporary postmaster in place, but where the post office has been shut and has a major impact on the businesses surrounding it. So on the one hand, partly, I think there's nothing better probably a local authority could do, but to support, how, as they can, the retention of post offices in town and communities, I think it's absolutely vital. However, and here is where I sort of bring in a slight bit of realism to the equation, absolutely, the authority has got a role to play in supporting more broadly. However, I personally don't think that that's a financial role in the broadest of terms. I can see in the chat bar, we've got a number of potential post offices that are potentially under threat, and therefore, I think it's quite difficult to expect that the authority would be in a position to subsidise and fund the running of all of those post offices. Without, you know, going into a whole host of depressing facts, post offices have been made so difficult to run by subsequent governments, that, you know, taking away services, changing the way that they pay postmasters, it's a really difficult but absolutely vital service to sustain. So I guess I wanted to say that absolutely, I would concur that it's really important for this authority to support, but I don't necessarily think that that's in pounds, shillings and pence. And really importantly, I think there's a real role for town and community councils here, much more than there is for the local authority when it comes to pounds, shillings and pence, and actually understanding and knowing and supporting to make sure that that post office gets located in the appropriate place. And I totally also understand the points that, for example, councillor Dimmock's making about the impact it would have in Port Squier, because it's really important that post offices are with a reasonable travel time. And whilst there is the post office in West End in Caldecott, I also understand that actually, you know, having it in the centre, centrally located, is really important for some people, particularly if they're travelling there by public transport, or may have other reasons why, you know, mobility and accessibility is an important consideration. So I absolutely support, there is no part of me that doesn't support the retention of the post office, I want to make that absolutely clear. But the motion doesn't make specifically clear what kind of support that this is looking for, and now there's the addition of the financial support in Usk. Now, I'm not suggesting that we should withdraw that financial support, but I am suggesting that from my point of view, I would be expecting Usk Town Council, for example, to step up a bit further, given the challenges that the authority faces potentially. Anyway, that's just my personal point of view, I am more than happy to share any of my experience of working with post office, but I think what you will find is, and actually final point, the role that councillor Griffiths talks about around testing the capacity of other businesses to take on, that's very much the role of the post office, they've got people employed to do that. And I think that it's really, really important that we very much focus on making sure that the post office is there, serving the people of Caldecott and surrounding areas, but that equally, we do that in a reasonable and sustainable way, because if there are further losses with reference to McColes and their financial, you know, the misposition they find themselves in, then it isn't going to be, not just in financial terms, but in officer capability terms and opportunity cost terms, necessarily something that the authority can enter into whole scale and although, as I said, some part of me thinks that probably for the amount of money that's being paid, there's no better investment in a town centre, you know, the various regeneration schemes won't bring as many people in as having a post office in some cases. So thank you councillors, but I find the motion, I absolutely support the post office, I'll do anything, you know, if there's anything I can do to support, I will, but as written, I find it hard to support, I just want to make that really clear. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Peter Strong.
Thank you. If we look at the wording of a motion, it certainly doesn't specifically mention financial support, neither does it rule it out, of course. I think that was very deliberate, because I think the Seven Side, Caldecott councillors and myself in Roggett are very clear that we in no way are trying to interfere with the normal sort of commercial procedures that post office counters have put into place. What we are trying to do is initially to support those procedures by, for example, talking to local businesses and so on, to encourage them to look at the offer from the post office to see if they might take it up. However, even if another business was to take it up, there's going to be a gap in provision of probably several months before the transfer can be taken place. If no business takes it up, then we do have to make one of those hard decisions. Now, I'm not assuming that that would require a large amount of money from MCC on a long-term basis, but there are other ways in which MCC can help. MCC owns a number of properties in the town, in the town central area. It might be possible, either on a temporary or longer term basis, to make use of those premises for some sort of postal service. So, you know, the motion is deliberately framed in a way is not to commit ourselves to something that we couldn't afford as a council, we're all aware of the financial situation. So I hope that will reassure councillor Taylor and I believe councillor Howarth making similar points there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Strong. Councillor John.
Thank you very much. Well, can I thank councillor Strong for her motion? The post office in Caldecott is a really valuable part of the community and one we really support. And I also agree with councillor Peter Strong's comments then, that, you know, support is not always necessarily financial. So we absolutely support the motion. Can I thank the members who supported councillor Keir's amendment? Although I am disappointed that a number of members voted against, there were only 37 votes on that motion, so a number of Labour members must have not voted at all, because I think there were 46 members on the, in the meeting. I'm quite concerned about that, because I think.
That was not a recorded vote, I don't think, Miss Price, which button's there? I'm very sorry.
That's true. I mean, you're making a bold assumption there councillor John, that we like, we don't, we didn't have a roll call vote, so you don't know for a fact who or which party voted which way, do you?
But I do know that nine members didn't vote, so that must include some Labour members, because there are only six independents, and there were seven members who voted against, so that must also include at least one Labour member, if not all seven.
That's a assumption of knowledge, you can vote for, you can't make that assumption outright. I think it's testing your medical knowledge, councillor John.
I am in control of your group.
It's basic maths, seven and nine are more than six.
All right, councillor John, do you have any more, any more to say on this?
The hypocrisy, I think, of bringing forward a motion, and many, many Labour members have talked about how critical it is to support post offices, and then when you have a post office that you have actually inherited, the only post office in the UK that's run by a local authority, and you have the chance today to actually demonstrate your real support for a post office, a number of councillors have failed to do so. Last year, it didn't cost the council a penny, this year it's set to cost the council £4,000. I appreciate there are financial challenges, and we've heard that from councillor Garrick, but, you know, in the scale of the council's budget, £4,000 is not an enormous sum. I mean, you were quite happy to spend £4,000 on those glamorous videos you had commissioned, telling us all about your hobbies. So surely, protecting a post office, not just for the people of Usk, but for the wider rural communities in central Monmouthshire, is more important than that. It brings people into the community hub where they can access adult education courses, it brings people into the library, it's a really valuable resource. So I think the people of Usk will remember how a number of councillors have voted today and have failed to support them, and I think that's really disappointing. But I thank councillor Strong for her motion, and we look forward to voting in favour of it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor John. Councillor Garrick, you had your hand up, do you still wish to speak?
Oh, absolutely, Chair. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to just respond to councillor Taylor's point on the financial commitment that she's claimed in that amendment. The amendment as provided by a chief officer for people and governance does not mention financial commitment to any post office. We've committed in that amendment to the long-term future of the USK post office. It could be potential that the council may choose to pursue alternative innovations and ways of delivering rather than actual direct funding of that post office. We're committing to the long-term service of that post office on that amendment. I'd also like to point out that councillor John has really, really skated over the fact he's got no clue how his own councillors have voted, and is just assuming and claiming that they have all voted for it, and then accusing other councillors of voting a different way, which he has no way of proving, and I thoroughly object to that approach. That said, I'd like to say I really welcome the work being carried out by my fellow Caldecott colleagues in campaigning for the continuation of post office services within our town. As a ward councillor, I've personally been approached by residents whose community groups are exclusively reliant on a cash-based system which require access to a post office. We also have many residents that rely on the post office for banking services, who are not able to utilise online banking, and that stretches off into some of the most vulnerable members of our county. banking. And that stretches off into some of the most vulnerable members of our county. Um, in my opinion, it is absolutely essential for our community, for our community groups, for small businesses, to have access to a post office. And I absolutely do support the intent of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Garrick. Councillor Garrett.
I think I know Mark Drakeford felt in the chamber a few weeks ago. Um, and I'm aware that a couple of people have actually left. Um, I think councillor John has left and councillor Thomas has had to leave the meeting on the chat. Sorry, uh, sorry, I'm, sorry, councillor Tude Thomas. And I'm not sure if councillor Lucas had problems with their internet earlier as well. So there were at least three councillors possibly. So just to correct the record about that, I think this is a Labour motion as well. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Garrett. Right councillors. Councillor Strong.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for such a lively discussion. And thank you so much for supporting the motion. Um, I would like to add that, um, in respect to councillor John's of, um, insinuations, I actually supported the amendment and I was happy to do so. Um, and, um, I, I do welcome the fact that, you know, the, the, hopefully the, the council will give therefore support to the amended motion and support our, uh, local businesses and the, the continuation of the Caldercot post, main post office in our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Strong. Councillors, we're now going to move to a vote on this motion.
Where is some of the vote then? It's right at the bottom.
Right. That motion is carried. Moving on to our third motion, councillor John.
Thank you. Councillors will have read with alarm the revelations that have come from Gwent Police in recent weeks about alleged misogynistic, racist and homophobic behaviour within the force. Earlier this week, we learned of a force officer to be suspended since these allegations emerged, emerged, whilst a fifth has been placed on restricted duties while investigations continue. We expect the highest standards from our public servants and these concerns, while in private messages, may be reflective of a wider culture. I welcome the investigations from Wiltshire Police and the IOPC, but it's important that locally, that as elected representatives, we can have confidence in what's being done to root out unacceptable behaviour. The Sunday Times has published a series of allegations which give cause for concern. I felt disappointed by the initial reaction of the police and crime commissioner, who said he was confident that the overall culture within the force is good and that this is more about individuals than a collective concern. While I hope that's the case, I think the suggestion that there are just a couple of bad apples does need to be evidenced. I fear that a blasé attitude towards allegations of this kind could risk its continuation under the radar. How do we know that this is limited to a handful of individuals and is not evidence of a wider culture? So I don't think we can afford to be defensive. And I don't think that attitude instills confidence. We can't cover up this sort of behaviour. It needs to see the light of day. Many of the specific allegations are quite distressing, so I won't repeat them in this chamber. But suffice to say, they're extremely alarming and include sexist, misogynistic and racist behaviour. It also includes the suggestion that amongst serving officers are sex pests, drink drivers and wife beaters. That's, that's, uh, the, the quote. Last week, the BBC quoted the former firearms instructor who worked closely with Gwent's David Powis and South Wales Police authorities and, uh, said that a boys' club attitude was driving women out. We're seeing uncomfortably regular concerns being raised about conduct in male-dominated industries and politics is sadly no exception. There have been horrendous alleged incidents in Parliament, in the Senedd and elsewhere, and all political parties have a duty to ask themselves uncomfortable questions and to take further action to root out unacceptable behaviour. Investigations remind us of our own responsibilities, not just as individual councillors to uphold the highest standards of conduct, but also to ensure that measures are in place to encourage victims to come forward. There have been sadly a number of misogynist, of examples of misogynistic behaviour in Welsh councils. And while we can be proud that we've made great strides, bigger strides than anywhere else in Wales, to be a more, uh, genuinely diverse council, we can't afford to rest on our laurels. So we have to ask ourselves, can we be confident that our own organisation always upholds the highest standard of behaviour? I think all organisations should never be afraid to ask themselves difficult questions, um, in case there are individuals who've fallen short of those standards and ensuring that robust measures are in place to expose, uh, any behaviour that falls short. I welcome the firm response from the chief constable Pam Kelly, her commitment to external investigation and also her willingness to reach out to elected members. I've met Pam Kelly on many occasions and I believe she's a really effective leader in public service and, and I have, I have full confidence in her. But we do need answers. I believe that as elected representatives, um, we should ask the police and crime commissioner for Gwent Police, Geoff Cuthbert, to come to this chamber and answer members' questions so we can reassure our residents. So my motion calls on the administration to write to the police and crime commissioner to invite him here for scrutiny. Um, I understand that since, um, my motion was submitted, the leader has indeed already written to, to Gwent Police. So I, I look forward to, um, hearing from her and I, I thank her in advance, um, for, for her support. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor John. Do you have a second for this motion please?
Yes Chair.
Thank you councillor Dimmock. Just quickly before we move to councillor Brocklesby, I think we have two councillors who would like to declare an interest.
Yes Chair, I'm a member of the police and crime panel and I've been, uh, just declared a personal interest. I won't vote, I won't speak.
Thank you Chair. Um, I also alongside councillor Easton sit on that same panel which has been appointed, which I've been appointed to by this council, based on advice by, uh, Matt Phillips. I am allowed to contribute and allowed to vote. Thank you.
So Chair, ju- just to clarify, um, but both councillors are, uh, it's a personal interest, not presidential. So they are both allowed to contribute and vote. So councillor Easton, you will be able to take part if you so choose.
Yes, okay. I realise that. Thank you Chair. Uh, thank you Matt.
Thanks. Right councillor Brocklesby.
Thank you Chair. Um, I fully endorse this motion and, and I think we all agree this is a hugely serious issue. Um, shocking, but sadly not surprising. I started my working life, uh, in rape crisis centres. I was a director at one point in Birmingham. And I am saddened and quite depressed that the figures of number of women killed by partners, number of women experienced rape or serious sexual crime has actually gone up since the 1980s. Clearly, the police are not the only institution to be blamed for this. It's widespread, um, in our institutions and also widespread in the way women and girls and, um, people of different genders are considered and the way that we are taught and socialised around this. It is good, and I think we all agree across the chamber, that in this council we have zero tolerance to sexual harassment, to any form of abuse against anyone regardless of gender and what happened in the last administration and will continue to happen now. Along with other leaders of Gwent, we met with, we called for a meeting two weeks ago with, um, Pam Kelly and with, uh, Geoff, the police commissioner, where we strongly laid out our concerns and the need to act collectively and swiftly to address these concerns and raise the trust, which is, we know, not there. Just lost my glasses. Which we know is not there, either in Wales or the UK, in terms of reporting serious sexual crime or rape. And we have a duty to act collectively to raise that trust so that survivors can feel they can have justice, but also that they have the services that will allow them to make a very difficult choice of putting themselves into the criminal justice system, starting with the police. I absolutely concur with councillor John that it is not about a few bad apples. And that was made very clear by, uh, chief constable Kelly, that it's not. It is a cultural issue, an organisational cultural issue, where we need answers to questions around what will the police do in terms of public accountability, in terms of post-training, in terms of vetting, uh, possible recruits, and in terms of continual monitoring and increasing, um, serving officers' awareness, not just of, um, how they should behave and what behaviour changes are needed, but also what are their obligations to people of all genders who report sexual crime. I'm glad to say, I followed that up with a phone call to Pam personally, because I think I absolutely again endorse what you say councillor John. Um, she is a strong public figure. Um, she doesn't need anybody, um, from outside telling her what misogyny is or any form of sexism, because to get where she has, she has had to deal with it over decades. She is a strong leader who is working to root out and starting to shift that organisationally controlled, uh, culture. And make my mistake, it's going to take a long time. I've written to her, asking her to come and address, um, the whole of council in seminar about this, in a seminar, which officers are looking for dates now. And I have invited Geoff, um, to that seminar as well. But I am very happy to send a separate, uh, letter addressing the concerns of council to the police commissioner. Thank you for bringing this motion. I think it is timely and it is very important that as a council, we are seen to be a hundred percent behind Gwent Police in rooting out what is just not acceptable in 2022.
Thank you councillor Brocklesby. Councillor Dimmock.
Thank you Chair and thank you councillor John for bringing this motion to council. And I fully support councillor Brocklesby's contributions and welcome the news that she has acted. It's, these are, these appalling attitudes which can result in the most heinous of crimes going undetected. The allegations are frightening and disturbing and our residents rely on officers during times of distress and we need confidence that they're going, they're not going to be faced with attitudes of racism, misogyny and homophobia and can trust the officers that they are in contact with. So I would welcome the police and crime commissioner and, uh, Pam Kelly attending the select committee. This abusive and inappropriate behaviour has no place whatsoever in this world and especially public organisations. We must lead by example and ensure that this is not amongst us. So thank you Chair and thank you councillor John.
Thank you councillor Dimmock. Councillor Birch.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to thank councillor John for bringing this motion. And it is particularly significant, I think, because in order for misogyny and, uh, that kind of rape culture to persist, it has to be tolerated by other men. This is a problem of male behaviour in male-dominated institutions, which acts to make women and girls feel unsafe, to be unsafe, and, uh, acts to, uh, in very many cases, to remove them from public life, um, to blight their lives. So it is absolutely great that in this case, it is a male leader who is calling that behaviour out. And I would urge all, uh, members present, um, if you weren't, uh, wearing your white ribbon on White Ribbon Day, it is not too late. Um, and to make that, uh, statement, ally yourselves with that cause. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Birch. Councillor Riley.
Thank you Chair and thank you councillor John. Following the report in the Sunday Times, I wrote to them about my own experiences as a young police recruit more than 40 years ago. It was also taken up by the Monmouthshire Beacon. They published a letter with their own heading, hounded out, hounded out by vile sexist police. That was their, their view of the honest accounts that I wrote to them. I had hoped, 20 years later, I experienced the same behaviours while working alongside officers of Gwent Police. I had hoped that things had changed with a new generation. From what I've read, that was optimistic. So I would support this motion. I do not wish for any female officers to explain, to experience this long-lasting distress and to be similarly hounded out. It was distressing then and it's distressing now. I cannot say what other aspects of Monmouthshire life are affected by the described attitudes, but we know that misogyny, racism and homophobia et cetera, within our outdoor enforcers cannot be a good thing. Monmouthshire has shocking domestic abuse figures and also above average levels of serious crime involvement by young females. These statistics may or may not be related to these concerns, but we should not let it go uninvestigated. So yes, I support this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Pavia please.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks Chair. I, I think there will be, um, complete consensus around this chamber this afternoon regarding the allegations that have arisen in Gwent Police. As councillor John said, they were shocking and abhorrent and they do require immediate action. I'm, I'm pleased the, the steps, um, that have already been set out by the chief constable in that regard. But I just wanted to highlight obviously the agency that we have as, as councillors and, and as a council. Um, the, the role of the public services committee is a, is a crucial, uh, tool that we have in our, in our, um, toolbox in terms of scrutinising the partners and partnerships that we engage in, uh, to deliver key frontline public services. And knowing councillor Watts as I do, I'm confident that we'd be looking at the first opportunity to bring in, uh, the police and crime commissioner and other senior officers, uh, to discuss this matter as soon as possible. Those of us who also sit on other partnership authorities, um, like the, the fire and rescue service, also have a responsibility to do their due diligence and ask probing questions about corporate culture and principles, uh, and ensure that their accountability mechanisms to the public are, are transparent and robust. But finally, as, again, as councillor John has said, we, we also have a responsibility to work on the culture and values that have been developed in this, uh, authority over many years. Respect, inclusion, empathy, integrity and courage, courage to, 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 to challenge where challenge is required. Culture and values, um, that have been embedded here are non-mutable. Uh, they take time to develop and embed and they can perish very, very quickly if they're not consistently worked on. So just let, let us all be mindful of our, of our behaviour, how we engage with ourselves, with our officers, but most importantly with the public whom we serve. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Pavia. Councillor Garrick.
Thank you Chair. Um, I'm actually married to the son of two now retired police officers. Um, we've got a high level of respect of police forces and the role of the police in our household. I can only say that I'm thoroughly disgusted by the revelations that have come to light on Gwent Police. There is no room for misogyny in a police force. I do note that the first reaction by Gwent Police, um, to vigils for Sarah Everard after her murder by a police officer, was to ban a peaceful vigil by a woman in Newport. That was subsequently overturned and I was able to attend that vigil. But that was a very knee-jerk reaction, which in my opinion does indicate a certain level of culture within that organisation. But I'm not going to stop there. I would also point to the investigation into the death of Moyerat Bashir, who died whilst being restrained by Gwent Police officers, whose family deserves both truth and justice. And again, I'd like to point out that the former Welsh newspaper, The National, pointed out that in 2018, 78 of our children within that police force were strip searched. And those statistics demonstrated that generally strip search were disproportionately applied. those statistics demonstrated that generally strip-search were disproportionately applied to members of the same community. Indications are that there are absolutely cultural issues which are affecting operations of Gwent Police. The culture that exists in an organisation is the culture that leaders are prepared to walk by. If that is not being owned, then we have a duty as councillors and elected representatives to call out the culture that has come to light and to demand accountability for the safety of all of our residents, without procedures to their gender or their race or any other protected characteristic. I welcome the invitation of the Chief Constable and the Police and Crime Commissioner to come to this council and demonstrate how they will eradicate this culture and provide a safe police service for our residents in our area. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Garrick. Councillor Fuchs.
Thank you. Thank you councillor John for bringing this motion also, which I wholeheartedly support. There is no place for racism, misogyny or homophobia in any of our public institutions, but I think we also all need to be aware that we check our own privilege and listen to our own unconscious biases that sometimes come out when we don't even realise they're there. I think the other thing I'd like to say is we must call it out as well, whenever we see it, whenever it's safe to do so. One thing that really shocked me as well with the media over the Sarah Everard case was, that case got a huge amount of coverage when she was killed. Little did the media cover the case of Wenjing Ling, who was a woman of Asian origin, I think living in, I can't remember exactly where, but in South Wales, who'd been killed by a family member that very same week. She hardly got a mention of coverage in the press. Why is that? We have to ask ourselves. So it's not only the police, it's also our media, and we can help stop that kind of situation. And for example, the organisation I work for and the other women's aid organisations in Wales came together and our vigil was an online vigil, and it was for both Sarah Everard and Wenjing Ling, because we should say her name too. One woman is killed every three days in the UK. We're currently in the 16 Days of Activism, I'm sure many of you will be aware. So please, you know, as councillors, as individuals, we should support our women's aid organisations such as Cofanol, such as Slamai. And just finally, we desperately need to see an increase in the number of rape convictions in this country, in the UK, and we need the Westminster Government to end the abhorrent policy of no recourse to public funds, which means that migrant women or asylum seekers do not get access to refuge, because they are not allowed to access public money. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fuchs. Councillor McConnell.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Fuchs has made all the points I'd wanted to have made, so I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McConnell. Councillor Bond.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Fuchs has made some brilliant statements, as so has everybody else beforehand. So I understand the one woman every three days that's killed is just the figures that are counted at this moment, and there's concern that it's under-reported or reporters as another reason. I'd like to thank councillor John for bringing this, brilliant, well done. And really, unfortunately, this sadly reflects, the police and other services are a microcosm of society, and it reflects power in society and who has power over the people. So I think we need, as councillor Fuchs has said, that we need to look at ourselves and how we behave towards each other, and as I say, reflects, although it was a pressure cooker or magnified in opportunities where people are working together, such as in the forces, it is society as a whole that needs to change this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bond. I don't see any other hands up, so... Oh, sorry councillor Keir.
Thanks very much Chair. I just wanted just to just bring into conversation here that there is an independent review going to take place of Gwent Police via Wiltshire Police, and I think we should bear that in mind as well, that, I'm not sure obviously when the Commissioner and Chief Constable will be attending the council meeting etc, but I think we need to have in the back of our minds that there will be an outcome of an independent review, and that we should take note of that, and if need be, take further actions or whatever we choose to do at that point. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Keir. And now back to you councillor John.
Thank you. Can I thank members for their support? I won't respond individually to everyone who's contributed, but thank you. Can I particularly thank the leader for your support and your proactive approach? The leader proactively came to me last week to discuss this, and I'm grateful for the approach she's taken and the strong representation she's made directly to Gwent Police. Can I thank councillor Riley for that very personal contribution, and I don't underestimate how difficult it is to come to this chamber and to make contributions about experiences that you've had in your own lives, you know, that's, it's a brave thing to do, but it illuminates the conversation, you know. I don't have lived experience of misogyny, I know many of my female colleagues have, and, you know, we should all be angry about that. And that statistic that one woman is killed every three days, you know, that's our daughters, our sisters, our mothers, you know, this is not some statistic that's detached from our lives. It's something that we need to be angry about, and all of us have a responsibility to call out behaviour that we are not happy with, that is not appropriate. And, you know, councillor Birch is absolutely right, you know, this isn't an issue that's been caused by women, this is about toxic male behaviour that is particularly evident in male-dominated organisations and industries. We used to be an organisation that was heavily dominated by older men, we're now a much more diverse and representative council, and that's something we need to celebrate. There are other councils across Wales that really need to learn from the experience here, and to see the benefits and the more constructive and representative debates we have, because we're benefiting from more female voices, more younger voices, voices from different communities, classes, backgrounds, and there's so much that other councils, I think, can learn from the experiences we've had here in Monmouthshire. So thank you everyone for your support, and I look forward to Gwent Police coming here and us having the opportunity to ask further challenging questions. But, you know, this is not just an issue for Gwent Police, I know this is a significant issue that's been in the media, but if it's happening in Gwent Police, it's likely it may be happening in, or will be happening in other police forces, in other industries, in other sections of public life, and we've all got a challenge to confront it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you councillor John. Councillors, we'll now move to a vote on this motion. At this point, I would normally say we're going to have a break, but do you want a break, or shall we push on through the questions? Carry on, carry on, questions it is. Okay then, councillor Pavia.
Thank you Chair. Just ask the question that's set out in the agenda, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if there was a hands-up function, but of course, I would like to answer this question. So I'll try not to be too long-winded, because actually quite a bit of it was covered in the discussion earlier this afternoon, but I'd better just summarise for the sake of correctly answering the question, in case anybody has missed any of the detail. So the county council submitted a bid to the Welsh Government for a local transport fund grant for this financial year to progress a detailed business case, that's Welltag Stage Three, for the Chappstone Traffic Relief Road. But unfortunately, this aspect of the funding bid was unsuccessful. As our deputy leader councillor Griffiths has very clearly set out earlier this afternoon, the traffic relief road is just one part of a range of solutions needed to address the current and future travel pressures through Chappstone. Yesterday, the leader and deputy leader of this council met with their opposite numbers in Gloucestershire County Council to talk about our shared challenges and objectives around the cross-border travel. We do have a clear shared ambition, and we'll be working closely together to lobby for the necessary improvements. I'm pleased to inform council that proposals for the Chappstone Transport Hub did secure funding for Welltag Three detailed design this financial year, and this work has now been completed. This does put us in a strong position to bid for additional funding next year to implement the project, which comprises improved bus facilities at Chappstone train station, linking services to Chappstone town and surrounding areas. Together with proposals to increase train service frequency to Chappstone town, sorry, together with proposals to increase train service frequency and this council's ongoing work on active travel improvements, a suite of improvements will offer sustainable travel options and help to alleviate some of the traffic problems currently faced by Chappstone during peak travel times, but we don't underestimate how serious these are. So it is expected that we'll be able to make a further bid, we hope, for Welsh Government funding for Welltag Three for the relief road in the coming financial year. Thank you.
Thanks Chair. Can I thank the cabinet member for her detailed response, and can I also thank and welcome the comments that a deputy leader made earlier on in item 6B? I'm really pleased that the new administration is committed to developing the business case. Obviously, I'm very disappointed in terms of the outcome. I don't know whether the cabinet member is in a position after, obviously beyond this meeting, to share that, any correspondence from Welsh Government, and just to understand the rationale why it was refused at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pavia. Councillor Pavia, you're up again, straight away.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Can I ask the question to the cabinet member for education that's set out in the agenda? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, and thank you councillor Pavia. The childcare sufficiency assessment was completed by Monmouthshire County Council earlier this year. It was considered and agreed by Cabinet on the 2nd of March of this year, which you may well remember. This study and report did not identify any significant gaps in childcare in the Chappstone area. The take-up of early education places is monitored termly, and in the last summer term was 85%, which is when it's at its highest, so there are sufficient places available. The main gap is in relation to childminders, and this issue isn't specific to Monmouthshire, it's a country-wide problem. We're working closely with the Professional Association for Childcare and Early Years, an umbrella organisation that specialises in childminders, to try to recruit new childminders and to support existing childminders so we can retain them. We are aware that the rollout of Flying Start childcare for two-year-olds is likely to increase demand for places. However, there are currently surplus places at Flying Start setting in Chappstone. There is also a day nursery in the Chappstone area that has recently increased their number of registered places to offer more places for two-year-olds. We'll continue to monitor the situation and develop additional childcare places to meet demand if required.
Could I thank the cabinet member for his response? He probably is aware that the element within the childcare sufficiency assessment, there was a specific area in terms of aligning policy with our Welsh in education strategic plan, which this council is committed to establishing a kilth maithrin in Chappstone, which will ensure that Welsh medium childcare is available in four of the five main settlements in Monmouthshire. So just want to understand what proactive steps the administration is taking to pave the way to implement this commitment and establishing nursery provision in the medium of Welsh language. I certainly know there's a primary school in the Chappstone cluster open and willing to discuss hosting a kilth, and I suspect that officers know the intentions of that school too. So will he give a commitment for officers to start those discussions with the aim of establishing a kilth for the 2024/25 academic year in Chappstone? Thank you.
I certainly see no problem at all with that, and we are committed currently supporting maithrin provision in Monmouth before the opening of a new seedling school in Monmouth for Welsh medium education there next September. We can certainly look at strengthening our support for Welsh medium in Chappstone as well.
Thank you councillor Grokert. Councillor Edwards, I wonder whether you'd be willing to reorder your questions and speak to councillor Mayby first, as I'm aware that she's not very well and is starting to flag. Would that be okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Now, could the cabinet member inform council of progress with the grant funding bid to Welsh Government for this current financial year for a Safer Roots in Communities scheme for road safety improvement works for St Lawrence Road, that is between Kingsmark Lane and Racecourse Roundabout in Chappstone?
Thank you, and thank you so much Chair. Yeah, I share councillor Edwards' concern about road safety, absolutely, but the funding bid for improvements to the Welsh Street in the St Lawrence area that went to the Safer Roots in Communities grant fund, it was sadly unsuccessful. I believe that officers did inform councillor Edwards of this in June. Officers are now considering how best to deliver those improvements, and they do propose to make a second application for grant funding in the coming financial year, and are also looking at what other actions they could take, what other travel improvements might be needed to support the proposed RDLP housing allocation at Bayfield, and to make sure that the new development is well connected to the town centre and train station. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mayby. We talk a lot about active travel and Welsh Government and this council wanting children of a certain age to be able to walk to school. In St Kingsmark, we're fortunate enough to have a secondary school and major primary school, and all within a healthy walking distance within the ward. Now, it's fantastic that Welsh Street will be now part of the 20mph Chappstone pilot since I got elected in 2021, although even that seems to have stalled a little. However, on the other side of St Kingsmark, St Lawrence Road, we have a different scenario. This road is wider, it's more fast-flowing with traffic, drivers wanting to race down the High Beach Roundabout in a hurry to get to work, or perhaps to check out its notoriety. But seriously, it's also a busy road that has to be crossed by those residents who not only wish to visit the popular large corner shop, but also those who walk to either school, to either school rather, from the other side of the ward. In fact, schoolchildren even cross this busy road to purchase food at lunchtime. So my supplementary question is that, I have to admit, I was aware that it was unsuccessful, however, there was a reluctance to provide feedback, I think that was from the Welsh Government. So, I mean, there are, as part of this Welsh Government feedback, there are unsafe-looking pedestrian refuge island crossings, I think they call them, further up the road near St Barnett's Wood, but refuge is not a word I would use. Some of these islands are having their very own nature-ist neat moment, which makes it dangerous for pedestrians to attempt to cross when slippery grass and other unwanted plant life grow there. So even the road safety bollards and markings are in a very poor state. Would you be kind enough to join me on this part of St Lawrence Road, to see for yourself and hopefully move the work up the priority list, or allow me the opportunity to see any feedback that Welsh Government would provide on that funding bid, and also work with officers so that we can improve on a further bid for additional funding, and in the meantime, we can make this area a little more safe for pedestrians, particularly children and the elderly? Thank you.
May I just quickly reply to that? I think the suggestion about working together with yourself and officers to improve a future bid is a really sensible one, and I would welcome that. I wouldn't want to make any commitment about changing priorities before doing so, but yes, please, let's talk some more about it and see if we can do better with a future bid, and discuss in more detail what other improvements can be made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Edwards again.
So I'll take a sip, my voice is very croaky. At the start of this school term, it was a pleasure...
At the start of this school term, it was a pleasure to see the benefits from further continued investment in Chapstow School commissioned by the last administration, namely the upgrade of the sports facilities, installation of a solar carport and a canteen remodel and the next stage of a window replacement programme. Could the cabinet member for education inform council of any proposed future investment the new administration intends to make in Chapstow School while we await for progress with the 21st Century Schools Programme?
Thank you, Chair.
It's been flashing on and off, so it's died on me. Was it off for the whole of that? Right, I'll start again.
It's okay, we can do it.
I'll read it very quickly. In the last five years, the council has spent over £3 million at Chapstow Comprehensive School, enhancing its facilities. We've reported these developments previously to council. Alongside the remodelling and refurbishment work, money has been spent on general maintenance items such as replacement doors, windows and fire alarm system. Maintenance works and improvement work will continue to be made at the school, such as phase two of the works for the quadrangle, which is scheduled for the coming financial year. This funding sits alongside the investment that Monlife has made to the facilities that the school is able to use. This continued investment ensures that the building continues to be fit for purpose for pupils attending the school. The Sustainable Communities for Learning Programme, which we are now All Learning, is the new 21st Century Schools initiative. It's a bit of a mouthful, but that's what we've got to learn to call it now. It's a more agile rolling programme. As local authorities are currently at different stages through their existing band B, it's expected that as and when they're nearing completion of their band B programme, and here, of course, that's the Abigavenny 3219 school, a new strategic plan is submitted and this initiates the start of our rolling programme. At the latest, we must review and resubmit our programme by March 2024. The purpose of this is to encourage a smooth transition of programmes as and when the need arises, removing the stop-start actions associated with the current fixed-term investment programme. Officers are currently planning for the launch of an informal consultation considering the future of education provision in Chapstow that will begin in the new year.
Thank you councillor Grokot for your answer. I know you and I are in no rush to go home this evening, are we? Even though others have packed up already. As a supplementary question, I fully appreciate the importance of continuing to invest in current schools and the new name of the programme as well, and we hope obviously that will kick in for Chapstow as soon as possible. We need to maintain good learning facilities across the county and that has been done in spades in other towns in Monmouthshire. Would you agree with me that more could be done in relation to transforming more classrooms in the Chapstow School to make them a better learning environment, as was carried out in previous years? And if so, could you ensure that this is carried out in any current programme of improvements of Chapstow School? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I've had conversations already with the head teacher and the finance officer at the school. They are more than happy with the scale of the investment that the authority has made in recent weeks and months at the school. There has been an agreement amongst all parties, I think, in this chamber, that as we move forward, we have not forgotten that there will be three new schools and Chapstow is the one that has not had new facilities. Part of my discussions with the head and senior leaders in the school have been what the nature of that provision might be as we move forward and we would certainly listen very, very carefully indeed to what they would propose so that we can go forward together with the school. Being realistic, there will be no additional major investment between now and the start of that new initiative because we face very challenging financial times across the whole authority. So I can't commit any additional money. I think all members will agree that the money that has been spent in Chapstow over the last year or so has really been very generous and I congratulate my predecessor in post who committed that money. It really has helped to transform the quality of provision already in Chapstow, but certainly looking forward in the longer term, we hope that it will be the fourth school in our suite of comprehensive schools that really will be absolutely fantastic for its children and for the staff who work there.
Thank you councillor Grokot. Councillors, that concludes our business for today. Next, meetings on the 19th of January next year and I hope you all have a lovely Christmas.
Well chaired. Thank you all. Take care. Have a lovely Christmas.